I will open the Select Board meeting for April 28th. We're starting early tonight because we have an unusual agenda. This meeting will be recorded and all members are here, so we will be able to have a voice call rather than a roll call. I'm going to ask that we rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just. Please stand for a moment in support of the veterans and current military serving. Thank you. I thank all of you for coming. As you know, we're opening today's business with an interview of a town administrative, administrator candidate, Mr. Cody Hadad. Are you bringing him in now? Thank you. So I want to thank the staff that has shown up today and let you know that we have received questions from staff and board members. So we're going to start with those questions and then the Select Board will finish with asking additional questions. If you submitted the question and you need clarity, please raise your hand as a follow-up to the question that's asked. And from the board, we will be asking for clarity if we don't feel we have a complete answer. Thank you.
It's not Cody. It's not Cody.
Not.
There he is.
There he is.
Hello.
Hello, Cody.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Welcome. You are not a stranger to Dartmouth. However, you may be someone that folks in our audience do not know, either here in the room and/or as our meeting's being recorded and shown live, there may be people at home who do not know you. So could you please start by just giving us a brief intro to who you are?
Absolutely. First, thanks for having me. It's great to see so many members of the staff and the community here. I think it's showing to the community that Dartmouth is. Cody Hadad, I'm currently the Town Administrator for the Town of Halifax. I've been there for about two and a half years. Prior to that, I was the Assistant Town Administrator in Dartmouth and then the Director of Development. Started as the Grants Manager under Energy and Administrative Analyst in the Town Administrator's Office. So that's a little bit about me professionally. Very excited to be back here and for this opportunity.
Thank you. Cody, what we did is we surveyed the staff and asked them to submit questions. So I'm going to start by going through the staff questions. We have a few, so we're going to move right along. All right. Many employees throughout the town would like to have a town administrator be more present and involved in our departments and buildings. How would you go about being visible to all employees?
Yeah, I think it's very important, particularly, you know, in a town of Dartmouth size where you have, you know, you have the town hall kind of as the hub, but there's operations going on everywhere throughout the town. One of the things that I do now and I think works well is just popping into offices, so saying hello to everybody in town hall, but then also getting out to the other buildings and primarily do that, just stopping in. Or even when I have department head meetings, one-on-one with the department heads, often I will say, hey, why don't I come to you instead of you come to me? And it's an opportunity not only to go to their building, their office, but also to discuss with the staff that are in those offices, say hello. And I also think it's important to do just different events. So in Halifax, last week, we did a little barbecue, a little cookout, shut down the offices for an hour, 12 to 1, invited everyone, all departments came to town hall and we all sat and, you know, kind of just made my way around and said hello to everybody. So, but I do think just being physically present, getting out there and speaking to everybody is the best way to do that.
Thank you. How do you deal with staff that are resistant to change?
So that's not uncommon, right? Nobody really likes change, but I do think one of the, one of the things that I've done in Halifax that's been very successful is, you know, understanding what is the, are common goals. So the board obviously sets kind of the main goals for the community as the chief policymakers of the town. But even before we get to that process, what I've done in Halifax is what does, what does the town want? So not just the residents, but the employees. The employees are going to be the ones that are executing these goals. So how can we make it so these goals align with things that they believe in as well? And that really starts with one-on-one conversations with department heads, making sure our department heads are speaking with the staff and getting an understanding of, yeah, what are we doing? Are we accomplishing goals that are really reflective of the community, including the staff? And that's not always going to be the case, but I think if, if you go in a different direction, just understanding and explaining why, why are we going in this direction and explaining to the staff, you know, this is where the board wants to go, this is where we think we should go, what's your input? And even if we disagree, which we likely will in some things, explaining to them why we came to that decision, not just, you know, sorry, the board's making the decision, it is what it is. So that really collective effort, I think, helps that buy-in from, to change.
Thank you. The aging population in Dartmouth is on the rise, which I just found out I'm part of, highlighting a pressing need for increased services and support at the Council on Aging. How would you prioritize services and advocate for additional resources for the aging population within our town?
That's a very good question. I do think, you know, relying on the experts at the COA, so I'm certainly not an expert of the Council on Aging, or I call it the Center for Active Living, right? But I think relying on the team there and then where can we advocate within town? So one of the things that we've done in Halifax is work with our local delegation, our state representative and our state senator, and can we get some additional funding? Not necessarily just through grants, but through earmarks as part of the state budget. So we've gotten, I think, two, two years in a row working with our state rep, $50,000 earmarks for our Council on Aging for programming, for improvements to the building. So, I mean, fifty, every little bit helps, but I do think at the policy level, we can do as much as we can at the local level with the board and the staff, but you really need to work with the state delegation as well. And I think that's where that good communication relationship comes in.
Thank you. Could you provide in detail specific methods or strategies you have used in the past to successfully communicate with departments located outside the town hall?
Yeah, I think I touched on that a little bit, but again, getting, getting out there, getting to those departments. Email, obviously, is, you know, the main source of communication, but then following up is, is really important as well. So like I said, going out to those departments for those one-on-one meetings, making sure that department heads are actually relaying the information to their staff. And, and by that, you know, sometimes I'll go to, when I'm in a different building, you know, what do you guys think of this, something I had mentioned in a department head meeting? And making sure that, you know, that, that they are aware of things going on, not to trick anybody, but really just to make sure. And then if that information isn't being relayed, it's a good conversation that I can have with the department head. Hey, you know, your staff doesn't seem like they're aware of everything going on. Is there something I can do to be more effective to get it across to you? So they're getting across to the staff. But I do just think getting out there and really getting into these offices, saying hello to people, just, just creating relationships. It really is all about having relationships and knowing your team.
One of the things you mentioned in another opportunity we had to speak was Cody's Corner. So could you explain that?
Yeah, so, you know, you can't get enough information out to the public, in my opinion, and particularly, you know, with social media, all of our, your meetings are televised, but what can we do? Because the reality is, most people don't have the time to sit and watch, you know, hours of a Select Board meeting, hours of a Finance Committee meeting. So when we first started it about, almost two years ago now, it was a monthly show, Cody's Corner, we called it, and, or call it, and it was really just an update of what's going on in the community, what the board has done, you know, Finance Committee, where we are budgetarily, and then any events coming up in the next month. We've since transitioned to more of a quarterly update now that it's, it's kind of been in effect for longer, but it seems, you know, the community seems to really like it. I get a lot of positive feedback about it. I also have tried to highlight department heads because a lot of people don't, you know, what's going on in your Board of Health? What does the Board of Health really do? Or what's going on at DPW? So bringing in department heads during those tapings and just having them provide a synopsis and a face to the community too, because, you know, they're the ones running their operation and we want the community to know who they are.
Thank you. The largest department in town is the Dartmouth Public Schools. Could you highlight an experience you had, have, you have had in resolving a challenging situation with your school department?
Yes, which one? Let's see. So in Halifax, we are part of a regional, it's, it's odd. So we are fully regionalized pre-K, seven through 12, and then we are, have our own elementary school, which is K through six, but we have a shared superintendency district, so administration oversees the, all of the operations of all the schools with, with all three towns. One of the challenges is being part of a regional school district. If two of the three communities approve a budget, the third community is on the hook whether they approve that budget or not. So we knew going into fiscal '26 that we were having a, you know, things were tight just with the cost of education. Chapter 70 has not kept up with, you know, the, the costs for communities. So we knew it was going to be a difficult year. I started a group with the other town administrators where we started meeting probably in October to discuss the budget overall, but particularly with the schools where we were reliant on one another. And it was, you know, it was a challenge. Our elementary school came in with a 23% increase for fiscal '26. The regional level came in with a 12% increase. None of us could absorb that. So on top of our meetings kind of one-on-one with the town administrators and finance team from each community, we also put together a group budget meeting where all three communities were present. We had a representative from the Select Board of each community, the finance of each committee of each community, and then the town administrators and any finance staff. And that was early on in the process. So we kind of nipped in the bud. There were certainly some challenges still, but we were looking at like collectively three or four million dollar deficit going in and all three communities looking at Prop Two and a Half overrides, and none of us are going for Prop Two and a Half overrides this year.
Excellent. Not surprising that the challenging situation would be around the budget. What is your position on the balance between environmental and natural resource protection, economic growth, and municipal revenues? And how would they achieve such a balance?
Well, I think, you know, that, that really is up to the community. Again, you know, my job is to make sure that the policy is being implemented and run day-to-day operations, but I think you have some great planning documents in place, you know, with your master plan, you have a municipal vulnerability plan. And the community, that part of that process was a lot of public outreach, you had a lot of public workshops, and the community kind of made that very known, that they like the, the character of Dartmouth, but, you know, there's also a need for growth, just economically, you know, you need growth. So making sure that we're continuing to look at the, those planning documents and implement those as, as they were planned. But I think it's, it's really just striking, you know, what is that balance? Keeping development in the areas where we already have development and also preserving the areas where, that, that are preserved and we want to continue to preserve them.
Thank you. What does diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to you and why is it important?
So I think, you know, in the workplace and particularly, you know, in the town, it's a very positive thing. I think it can get politicized nowadays, but I think from, from my point of view, really bringing in different backgrounds, different ideas, different thoughts, it's only a positive thing because I'm only going to have, you know, I have a, a background and in, as a result of that, that's the reason I have thoughts and I think a certain way, but other people with different backgrounds are going to think a different way. And that's, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. So I think bringing in different groups of just people, right? Male and female sometimes view things differently, just from perspective. So bringing in those perspectives is very important to all the decision-making because then it just provides for more, more diversity in, in kind of things that can be implemented. And again, you're not always going to agree, but someone may bring up something that you never even thought of because it's a part of their background that, you know, led them to come up with that idea. So whether it's age, gender, race, you name it, I do think it's very important to, to have a diverse point of view just for that reason alone.
Thank you. What strategies would you use to create an inclusive workplace culture and how would you ensure that all employees, regardless of their backgrounds, feel valued and respected?
Yeah, I think it goes back to including, you know, the staff in the decision-making, you know, to, to an extent, and also including, you know, various individuals and background. One of the things that we've done in Halifax that I'm proud of is, you know, we include staff that maybe wouldn't typically be included in a project. So we were creating, we were implementing online licensing and permitting and, you know, primarily we're going to roll it out in our building department. So our building department and our AT department would, would typically be the departments involved. But in speaking with the staff, kind of getting to know them, I knew we had a staff member in particular who had a strong interest in that, has interest in growing kind of with the town. And so it was one of those things, I said, hey, we're, we're going to be implementing this project, something you're interested in sitting in on. She's sat in on it and she's become kind of the one, one of the administrators of it and is helping other departments roll it out. But I think it just, it shows we value, you know, the employee, in particular that case, but we also pay attention to what they're doing and, and what they want to do long-term. So getting everybody involved is very important and then just communication, like I said, I can't stress enough, just communicating with this, with the team, whether it's, I think I previously mentioned this, but, you know, if there's a birthday celebration, right? If there's an office that's having cake for one of the employees, I'd make it a point, you know, just to stop in and even if it's just five minutes, just saying hello, happy birthday, how was everyone's weekend? Because I do just think you get the most out of people when they feel valued and just simple things like that really go a long way.
Thank you. Final question from our staff. What is your style of leadership and how do you ensure effective communication within your team? Do you hear a theme?
I do, communication, huh? So I, again, I think it goes back to being visible, being available, making sure that, you know, the, the whole open door policy, it, I mean, that's, that's how I operate. It's very cliche, but I also think you need to go a step further than just the open door policy. And it, and it's hard because you're so busy and I even find myself, I'll set reminders in my calendar even sometimes, like get up and go for a walk around the building. And it's just to say hello because you're so busy, you get caught up in the work, but you, you have to just get out there. And again, making sure that you're communicating effectively things going on in department head meetings, in one-on-one meetings, when you're out speaking to people, and then making sure that that information is actually getting to the employees. You know, I know some, some towns and administrations will do all employee meetings. Personally, at least in Halifax, I have not found them to be effective. That's not to say that it wouldn't be something that we could investigate here in Dartmouth, but I think listening to the staff, because we, I had an all-employee meeting and what I gathered after speaking with the staff was, it really wasn't effective because people don't feel comfortable speaking out in a large group and they really, it felt like me just sitting up there speaking for a half hour, 40 minutes. And I really want a dialogue, I want a conversation because that's where, that's where it's effective, is when you have that conversation.
You also like meetings that happen in the room, not in the parking lot. Well, I'm going to pass the baton to my colleagues. I'll start with Chris.
Sure. Welcome, Cody.
And Chris.
I just wanted to get a little bit more involved in your experience with HR and collective bargaining, more specifically, you know, what your experience has been in those two areas?
Significant, I would say. So when I was here in Dartmouth, you know, I had significant involvement with Mr. McGuinness with all of the bargaining, was part of the bargaining team for all of the contracts in two different cycles. In Halifax, I've been the, you know, sole bargainer, you know, we have Labor Council involved, but really it's myself at the bargaining table. We have five different bargaining units in Halifax. So when I got there, they are contract, so I started in January, all their contracts were up that June, so we immediately began bargaining all five of those contracts, got all of those settled. Since then, we've had, you know, a number of impact bargaining situations where we've taken the lead on it. We actually, which is unique in municipal, we actually had two new unions formed, which in most municipalities, you don't see new unions, but for a number of years, you had a contingent of town, town hall employees, mostly administrative, clerical, and our library employees, they, they weren't unionized. And one of the things that pushed them, I shouldn't say pushed, but that led to them unionizing was, you know, their, their cost of living increases in the past, not under my administration, but previously were, they'd do the budget and then they'd say, okay, this is how much money we have left, this is what we're going to give these employees for a cost of living adjustment. Whether it was on par with the other collective bargaining agreements or not, so finally they kind of just said, hey, we're, you know, we at least want to be fair. So I worked with the Teamsters and our Labor Council through that process, which is very interesting. Our Labor Council in Halifax has been doing it for 25 years and this was only a second time with the formation of a union in a municipality. So, and then actually as of last week, we settled both of those agreements and those are for ratification tomorrow. So extensive HR. We, we have a benefits dedicated staff in Halifax, but we do not have like an HR director. A lot of those things funnel through me, so any sort of high-level discipline, I'm the one overseeing that as well.
Just a quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
Just your initial impression of, you think we're, that where the town is falling down as far as competitiveness against other towns, municipalities, and, and how we can become more competitive to get the best talent that we can possibly get?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I would have to do a little bit of a deeper dive into different areas, but I know you've come, you've made some progress in your health insurance, which was obviously a, you know, a big issue. We had this, we have the same issue in Halifax, our health insurance is a 50/50 split. So even if you're, you know, paying competitively, if someone has to take the health insurance, you know, they're right back to not, not as competitive as some other communities. So looking at that, making sure, obviously compensation being competitive, I think you don't aiming to be the highest-paying municipality, right? But you need to at least be right, right in the average. And there's also other benefits, like I said, a good work environment, right? Being valued, those are, those are, you can't put a dollar value to those because when you speak with people, I think you'll find, you know, maybe there's another opportunity that could come up in another community or somewhere else where maybe they can make a little bit more in their paycheck, but, you know, do you work with a good group of people? Are you valued? So making sure the environment is well, and you're not going to fix that with everybody, but I think just generally speaking, making sure you can provide those benefits. I always say to my staff or whatever I'm hiring, you know, one of the greatest things about at least working in Halifax while, while I've been there is, you're never going to miss your kid's baseball game, right? You know, we're, we're flexible to an extent, I mean, job needs to get done, you need to be there. But it's, those are the types of benefits I think we need to make sure we're providing to stay competitive.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Mr. Tattelbaum, are you available?
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Cody, you have a fairly short resume, but you have a lot of experience as well, but you're also quite familiar to many people in town, residents, staff, volunteers. Some are going to, would be thrilled upon your arrival, some may not be so thrilled. Take us through the first 90 days, what you think you'd like to accomplish and, and at the end of the first year as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, to, to your first comment, as far as being thrilled or not thrilled, you know, I think I have very good relationships with the staff when I was previously here, but I also think generally speaking, I, I've always been very fair, that, that's how I operate, fair and consistent, whether that's in Halifax, whether that was when I was here. So I would hope that, you know, even if maybe there was someone that weren't thrilled, I guess you could say, they at least, they, you know, they'll be treated fair, everyone's treated fair. If you, if you do your job and you put your best foot forward, I'll be your biggest supporter and, and that's just, that's how I operate. But, you know, first 90 days, I think one of the nice things, certainly things have changed in the past two and a half years in Dartmouth, but you, you said it yourself, Mr. Tattelbaum, I'm familiar with a lot of the team here and I'm familiar with a lot of the things going on here. And so things have progressed, but, you know, I keep up with what's going on, keep up with some of the projects that you're working on, right? The Payton-Arim Bridge still needs to get worked on, you still have a lot of issues with the CSO, you know, DPW wastewater, there's a lot of things going on there, 40Bs, right? And these are all things that, again, have progressed, but I, I'm familiar with it. So getting in, you know, getting re-acclimated, making sure everybody understands, you know, just who I am and that they can trust me and that they can rely on me, and getting to know the staff that I'm not familiar with. So that really is the primary goal over the first couple of months. And then acclimating myself with the, the projects going on, priorities, meeting with the board collectively, but also individually to understand your priorities for the community and making sure that we set up a plan for over the next, you know, several years to making sure that I'm meeting your goals and also the community is progressing in a direction that you want to see it going. I think as far as specifics, it would really, I would need to get in and figure those things out, but I think, you know, 90 days, just getting to know everyone, getting up to speed, and I think a year, we're, we're right back into it, which, which again, I think I have a little bit of an advantage over other applicants because I do have that knowledge of a lot of the team here and also just the community as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Sir. Mr. McDonald?
Hey, Cody. Couple references you made regarding to team. The de facto, basically, town administrator, head, head of the town, you need to work with everybody. So how do you, how do you, in relating your experiences in Halifax, how do you go about getting a team effort in, in making decisions? And how, how has your effort in, in making the team? Previously, problems come up and how, how have you handled it with the team? So basically, what I'm looking for is, how are you, how do you intend to do team building?
Yeah, I think it's crucial and part of it goes back to get, so obviously you're going to have your finance team involved in your financial decisions, but I think, like I said, getting others involved where it makes sense. One of the things that I always do if I'm in a meeting and there's a decision to be had and I'm, I'm with members of the team is, I never give my opinion first because I don't want to intimidate them or I don't want them to feel like, well, I'm just going to agree with what Cody has to say. So I always make sure, you know, we just had group interviews, we were finalizing a new library director, and so we had an internal team of a search committee, interviewed candidates, and one of the things I made sure to do was, what, what are your thoughts first? Before I give mine, because again, I don't want to sway their decision, I certainly will give my thoughts, but I think it's important to, to get that input and then go a step further and if it's, if it's something I strongly disagree with, either understand why, you know, why, why did you give that, make that decision? And maybe it changes my perspective on it, but also if I'm going to go in a different direction explaining, this is why I'm going in a different direction. So I think that is a big part of, of having the team at the table and actually making them feel valued because you can have as many people at the table as you want. If you just have them there, part of the discussion, and then you make the decision and their input doesn't matter anyways, you might as well skip the team, it's just a facade. So that's, that's really important and I think, I think getting people to buy in at first is probably the biggest challenge that you face, right? In that, that their, that their opinion really does matter. And this is in Halifax in particular, I think, you know, the, the way it was operated previous to me was, you know, decisions were made, whether it was by the board or departments, department heads, whatever it was, and that, that's just the way it was. So for me to come in and say, well, well, no, I, you know, I, I want your feedback and I want your opinions, there's, there's some skepticism. And then also, also actually showing, yeah, I value those things and I actually take those things into consideration, I'm not just going to ask for them and then say, okay, thanks, and, you know, move on and implement my own decision. But it just, part of that is just time in building those relationships and building this trust. That's, that's probably the biggest challenge I foresee.
Thank you.
Mr. Mickelson?
Thank you, Cody. So please describe the most complex problems you have encountered in Halifax and how you worked with your team to resolve it.
I don't have any problems in Halifax, Stanley.
That's all I heard.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the budget challenge I mentioned was certainly, you know, up there on probably one of the most complex things just because it included, you know, other communities where, you know, even if you want to implement one thing, if, if you don't have the buy-in from the other communities, it doesn't matter what you do in your community. So that was certainly one, but I already touched on that. I guess one of the others probably would be when I first got I guess one of the others probably would be, when I first got to Halifax, so our solid waste is an enterprise fund, one of the things that the board had mentioned to me was, you know, we need to do revenue analysis, figure out, making sure we're at least breaking even with our enterprise funds, right? They're supposed to operate like a business, you can't be negative. And I don't know what research had been done, but the, our solid waste enterprise fund for the past 10 years had not been self-sufficient, they had been dipping into retained earnings year after year to fund their, their operation. The reality was, within the next two or three years, that the town wasn't going to be able to offer any sort of solid waste services, so we offer curbside pickup of trash and recycling, and then we have a, like a recycling center where people can utilize that. All those operations were going to cease, because funds were drying up, there were several capital items that we needed, you know, a trash truck nowadays is several hundred thousand dollars, and we were, you know, they were bleeding it out. So within the first few months, again, put a team together, myself, a member of our finance director, our solid waste coordinator, our highway director, a member of our select board, and we started sitting down, and we reviewed all of these things. Another wrench in the situation was our current, so we don't do our own trash pickup, we contract out, we do our own recycling, but not our trash. Our contract for trash pickup was expiring, so we had to go out to bid for a new trash contract, and so that was another aspect of it. But I think what we did is, we looked at, you know, what our costs were anticipated to be, we quickly went out to bid, it was a team effort, we really tapped into the knowledge of each of the stakeholders, I'm not an expert on a solid waste operation, but getting that information from the team, I was able to steer us in the right direction. We awarded a contract that's one of the best contracts in the state for solid waste pickup, and our retained earnings came out last year, and we were positive by several hundred thousand dollars compared to negative in the, in the past few years. So it was a, again, a lengthy process, extremely challenging, but we were, I was very honest with everybody upfront, that if we don't turn this around, we will not be able to offer these services in the future, and we want to retain those services to the community. So, but very proud of kind of the outcome of that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back, Mr. O'Neil, do you have any other questions?
I don't, Mrs. Brooks.
Can you just briefly explain, or actually tell us your past experience as an assistant here, administrator in Halifax, why you would be a good fit here?
Well, I mean, to be very honest, you know, I love my job, I love being in Halifax, I have a phenomenal board, I obviously let my board know about this opportunity, and I only have a three-member board in Halifax, but each one of them were very sad, but also very supportive, which I think goes to show you kind of the support that I have, very fortunate. So not really looking for another opportunity, but, you know, Dartmouth, I think, is a very special place, I learned that when I worked here previously. You have a very special team, I think that, that's telling here in itself, with kind of the, the members of the team that are here in the community, this is no nod to Halifax if anyone's watching, but, you know, when I interviewed in Halifax, that you didn't have this many team members in the room, and that's, that in itself is telling. But I think, you know, having that familiarity with the community, but also having experience as a town administrator, one of the things, and I think I was very well-prepared, you know, thanks to the town here and Mr. McGinnis, going into Halifax, but it, it's not something you can really prepare yourself for, going from being the assistant to being the number one person, it's a, it's a very different experience. And so that takes some time, and I think Halifax has been a great opportunity for me to do that in, I've dealt with a diverse set of issues, you name the issue, and we've probably dealt with it in my two and a half years. I also got there at a time of, you know, extreme unrest, it's a three-member board, two of the members had resigned, and the town administrator resigned, all within the same week. So when I got on board, it was two new board members, and, you know, myself as a new town administrator, and I think if you look back, I'm very, very proud of what we have accomplished there, the stability there, the, all the departments kind of worked in silos, and now everyone is talking, everybody's working together. But with that, I think Dartmouth, again, is, is very special, and I think I see a lot of opportunity here, and a lot of things to come in, and things that even I started working on, that aren't done yet, but I'd like to get my hands on and, you know, see them through. I think, you know, with the financial challenges lying ahead, not just for Dartmouth, but for, really Massachusetts communities, right, Prop 2 and 1/2, we want to keep taxes as low as possible, but, you know, bringing in, increasing your taxes by two and a half percent, it doesn't cut it anymore unless you have significant new growth, and you're not seeing that new growth, particularly with the state of the economy. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in Dartmouth, and I think my experience being here previously, and also being the number one in Halifax, would allow me to come in and excel, and that's really, you know, for myself and for our community, it's very important that not only will I have success in that community, but if I'm successful, that means the community is successful, and I have no interest in going in somewhere where that's not going to be the case. So I think, I'm very confident that if selected, that that would be the case here in Dartmouth, and we'd have a long tenure of success with the opportunities that are given.
Thank you.
Mr. Mickelson?
Just one other thing, Cody.
Yeah.
So with that being said, what would you consider a very successful first year?
Very successful. I think, again, getting in, getting familiar with all the staff, making sure that I have good relationships with each of the board members, knowing what your expectations are, and even getting down to the simple things of communication style, how do each of you communicate, making sure that I'm getting the information across to you, making sure that I'm doing it in a way that you're absorbing it, I think I mentioned this previously, but, you know, my three-member board now, I have one member who wants to be called for everything, I have one member who prefers a text, one member who prefers an email. So learning all of those things with each of you, getting to know all of the staff, you know, and getting to get re-acclimated with the staff, getting a good understanding of financially where you are, you know, Chris and Gary have done a phenomenal job in keeping, you know, steering the ship over the past year, that's a long time, you know, without a, a permanent town administrator, so working with them, and understanding where, where has the town been, and where do they think the town should go, in their experience over the past couple, you know, over the past year, I should say. So, and then just really digging in, and start working on the priorities for the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
As a parallel to that one, Cody, we, we're embarking on the grand experiment of looking at long-term capital planning over the next 30 to 40 years, and coupled with that would be, what kind of town do we want, what kind of schools do we want? How much money do we want to spend on schools? And that balance between, how would you deal with a long-term plan and capital, knowing in fact that we have challenges on a day-to-day basis with the operational budget as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think there is certain things, so a solid capital plan is very important, making sure that we're preparing that and updating that regularly, annually. So, you know, at the end of the day, if it ends up being a policy decision, at least it's an educated policy decision, right? So the implications of not funding X are Y, right? If we do, if we wait to do, you know, you name it, the cost is going to go up, you know, we predict X amount this year, and these are also the implications on the operations. So I think really digging into the capital plan, as far as that side of things, is imperative, and, and exactly like you said, I think, you know, at some point, it is likely that the town of Dartmouth is going to need a Prop 2 and 1/2 override. You know, you hope that you can continue to sustain high-level services in the community for as long as possible without that, but if you look at, you know, part of a group of 30 town administrators, and last year, this year, and next year, 27 of the 30 are anticipating or have had an operator, operational override. So it's not a reflection of, you know, poor management or operations, but you can't keep up the costs. So if it ever gets to that point, or when it does get to that point, making sure that those decision-makers are well-informed, you know, this is what we need to continue operating at this level, you know, this is the historic data behind it, this, and these are the reasons why we are where we are, and making sure that, you know, town meeting can ultimately, you know, finance committee can make a good recommendation, the select board can make that recommendation, and then ultimately town meeting, and the voters, if it ends up with a Prop 2 and 1/2, are educated and make those decisions. I think that's, that's the most that you can do, given the current financial climate, beyond working with, again, working with your state legislatures, so we know there's an issue with Chapter 70. Chapter 70 formula needs to be updated, the costs are not, are keeping up, the reimbursement from the state's not keeping up, the inflation factor is capped out at either 4% or 5%, right? We've seen historic inflation over the past few years that hasn't kept up. So those are all things we can continue to work on as well, with the board's assistance, and making sure we're communicating with them. We recently had, in our legislatures in Halifax, one of the things I recommended was have them come in for an update, and, you know, here are some of the things we're concerned about, and that was one of the main topics, was, you know, education. But it goes beyond that, and I think having those relationships is how you accomplish that, and just providing the information, so the community can make the best decision.
I'm all set, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil?
Just one more, Cody, I noticed that, and I had made a note about compensation classification studies, okay? So we are delving into that right now with our new HR director, so you'll be working with someone, working on that particular study, if you are able to get this position. What experience do you have on the compensation classification studies? Did you do one in Halifax?
We did, yeah, so I was, I was part of the one that was done here in 2019, again, not in a leadership role, but really assisting the consultant, providing the items that they needed, and throughout the process, and then working with Mr. McGinnis to bargain those into the successor agreements, the compensation classification study. In Halifax, I oversaw the whole process, well, I mentioned, one of the things when I got in there was compensation was a serious issue, particularly for our non-union employees, when I, their, their increases were 0, 1, and 1.6 for the three years prior to me being there, and obviously, right, there was record inflation, and they were capped out at six steps, and percentage between each step was, you know, if you were lucky, 1 and 1/2%, right? So, and just, we were losing good people left and right. So we applied for, I applied for a grant through the state community compact cabinet, was awarded a grant to completely cover the cost of doing that study, we selected GOV HR to, to do the study for us, oversaw at least on the town side, that whole process, and we re-class, we actually, we scrapped our whole prior system, the prior system wasn't great to begin with, and we implemented a new system that, one of the things I think speaks volume to what we implemented is, that's the same group that just unionized, and the, one of the only items that they didn't have an issue with was the compensation classification study. We didn't have a single request to, to reclassify any positions, and, you know, beyond the COLAs, they were fine with the, the system that we implemented, so you don't, you don't hear that often, and I think it was just, it was telling to the job the consultant did, but it's really what you put into it. I mean, if you, if you put in what you want to get out of it, you'll get a robust study as long as you have a competent consultant. If you put in the bare minimum, you'll get a study that's the bare minimum, so you need strong support staff on the town side, providing that. One of the things is providing interviews, right, the staff do kind of interviews to, what are you doing? One of the things you see in communities is, well, I man, you see a executive assistant for a police department, well, I manage 60 people. Well, well, no, no, you don't manage 60 people, you know, the chief, deputy chief, and the ranking officers manage the staff, you may provide support to, to the department, which has 60 officers, but you're not overseeing 60 people. Those are the things, and that's why it's important managers are reviewing those with their department heads, and I think that's why we have a, we had a very good, accurate system, because they were very honest, you know, and we, we sent, I kicked back a lot of those interviews, not that it was purposeful, but I had the managers review them, and I reviewed every single one, just to make sure things made sense to me, and I also learned a lot, you know, oh, wow, I didn't realize this position did this, is this true? Oh, it is, okay, well, that makes sense then. But I think you need to put in what you want to get out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cody, I want to thank you, I also want to thank you for recognizing the work that Gary and Chris have done for us over the last almost a year. It has been yeoman's work, and they've, they've done a great job, so thank you for recognizing that. I think one of your unique qualifications in reviewing your application, as well as many others, is the fact that you do know a majority of the Dartmouth staff, and we really do need someone that may be able to hit the ground running. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't believe so, I think this has been very informative, I appreciate it.
It was rapid fire, because we did a good job getting through it. Kay?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. Motion that we offer the job to Cody Headad pending successful contract negotiations.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to hold this meeting, and we are going to move into executive session.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Make a motion that we go into executive session.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. I, okay.
The purpose is for a current.
The purpose is for, to conduct strategy session for preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, and we will be, our goal is to return into open session as close to 5:45 as possible. Roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum? Mr. Mickelson? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And the chair says aye, we shall return. Cody, if you would take a few minutes to introduce yourself to the individuals here, there may be some that you know, some that you don't know.
Okay.
And we will, we'll let Melanie know when we're ready.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
From our paused session and return to open meeting, all members being here, we will continue to use our voice concern. So I'm going to go back to the agenda and see the town administrator's contract. And I want to report that in a bit of a surprise to me even, in that time, we were able to negotiate aspects of the contract which we feel will be helpful to the town. And we were able to successfully bring on board.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we vote to approve and ratify the contract between the town of Dartmouth and Cody Hadad as the town administrator effective July 28, 2025.
Seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Board, any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cody.
All we need now is Cody's signature on the contract.
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming in tonight and sharing a little bit more about yourself. The things that we heard tonight, and I'm going to speak for myself, were things that I really feel the town of Dartmouth is in need of the leadership that you discussed. And so the big shoes that you created tonight, you will fill or start to fill on July 28. And I look forward to seeing you.
Very excited. Thank you all.
Wonderful. Thank you. Melanie has your information. All right. I'm going to skip around because I'm waiting for some folks. So I'm going to move to E, our change of manager at Joe's Original, 61 State Road. And I know that we have Janelle Gertridge in the house, as it were. So welcome, Janelle.
Thank you.
We have paperwork in front of us that states that you are the change of manager. You are the new manager. Judy Silverstein completed the paperwork for us. And you have all the certifications that you need to, to be successful in your role. Do I have any questions from members of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. Discussion on the floor. Seeing none, ready to vote. All in favor of Janelle Gertridge becoming the manager at the Joe's Original on State Road. Say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Janelle. Okay. The next one we have, we're going to go with is the Greater New Beaufort Vocational School Committee representative. We have information from Kent Genthner, Secretary to the Superintendent for Dartmouth Public Schools, that Dr. Cynthia Marlin, the school committee voted on April 14, 2025, to reappoint Dr. Cynthia Marlin as the Dartmouth member to the Greater New Beaufort Vocational School Committee.
Motion to appoint.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. This position would, her current is set to expire May 1, so this would take her record of attendance in the last four years, 49 meetings. She attended all of them. Just a little background. So, any questions or comments on Dr. Marlin's appointment? Seeing none, the board vote in favor of reappointing Dr. Cynthia Marlin to the Greater New Beaufort Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cody.
All we need now is Cody's signature on the contract.
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming in tonight and sharing a little bit more about yourself. The things that we heard tonight, and I'm going to speak for myself, were things that I really feel the town of Dartmouth is in need of the leadership that you discussed. And so the big shoes that you created tonight, you will fill or start to fill on July 28. And I look forward to seeing you.
Very excited. Thank you all.
Wonderful. Thank you. Melanie has your information. All right. I'm going to skip around because I'm waiting for some folks. So I'm going to move to E, our change of manager at Joe's Original, 61 State Road. And I know that we have Janelle Gertridge in the house, as it were. So welcome, Janelle.
Thank you.
We have paperwork in front of us that states that you are the change of manager. You are the new manager. Judy Silverstein completed the paperwork for us. And you have all the certifications that you need to, to be successful in your role. Do I have any questions from members of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. Discussion on the floor. Seeing none, ready to vote. All in favor of Janelle Gertridge becoming the manager at the Joe's Original on State Road. Say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Janelle. Okay. The next one we have, we're going to go with is the Greater New Beaufort Vocational School Committee representative. We have information from Kent Genthner, Secretary to the Superintendent for Dartmouth Public Schools, that Dr. Cynthia Marlin, the school committee voted on April 14, 2025, to reappoint Dr. Cynthia Marlin as the Dartmouth member to the Greater New Beaufort Vocational School Committee.
Motion to appoint.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. This position would, her current is set to expire May 1, so this would take her record of attendance in the last four years, 49 meetings. She attended all of them. Just a little background. So, any questions or comments on Dr. Marlin's appointment? Seeing none, the board vote in favor of reappointing Dr. Cynthia Marlin to the Greater New Beaufort Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cody.
All we need now is Cody's signature on the contract.
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming in tonight and sharing a little bit more about yourself. The things that we heard tonight, and I'm going to speak for myself, were things that I really feel the town of Dartmouth is in need of the leadership that you discussed. And so the big shoes that you created tonight, you will fill or start to fill on July 28. And I look forward to seeing you.
Very excited. Thank you all.
Wonderful. Thank you. Melanie has your information. All right. I'm going to skip around because I'm waiting for some folks. So I'm going to move to E, our change of manager at Joe's Original, 61 State Road. And I know that we have Janelle Gertridge in the house, as it were. So welcome, Janelle.
Thank you.
We have paperwork in front of us that states that you are the change of manager. You are the new manager. Judy Silverstein completed the paperwork for us. And you have all the certifications that you need to, to be successful in your role. Do I have any questions from members of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. Discussion on the floor. Seeing none, ready to vote. All in favor of Janelle Gertridge becoming the manager at the Joe's Original on State Road. Say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Janelle. Okay. The next one we have, we're going to go with is the Greater New Beaufort Vocational School Committee representative. We have information from Kent Genthner, Secretary to the Superintendent for Dartmouth Public Schools, that Dr. Cynthia Marlin, the school committee voted on April 14, 2025, to reappoint Dr. Cynthia Marlin as the Dartmouth member to the Greater New Beaufort Vocational School Committee.
Motion to appoint.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. This position would, her current is set to expire May 1, so this would take her record of attendance in the last four years, 49 meetings. She attended all of them. Just a little background. So, any questions or comments on Dr. Marlin's appointment? Seeing none, the board vote in favor of reappointing Dr. Cynthia Marlin to the Greater New Beaufort Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Okay. Continuing. Joint Transportation Planning Group, otherwise known as the GTPG, reappointment of Tim Barber. So this is a SERPED think tank. And having looked into this, they meet the second Wednesday of every month at 2:00. What it asks us is to not only appoint or reappoint Tim, but also to make sure we appoint an alternate. If Tim is unable to attend that meeting, we have an alternate in place. So you can find that information.
What's the name for you? What's the name of the assistant?
On.
Who's the alternate? Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we.
On page 30. Yes.
Make a motion that we appoint Tim Barber as the representative to the Joint Transportation Planning Group and as the alternate, be Sandra Waterman, the Assistant Director of DPW.
Second. Motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. O'Neil, to appoint Tim Barber to the GTPG and the alternative to be Sandra Waterman. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. So thank you. We're going to take the bunch before we get to the 6:30. So, all right, Mr. Kader, no, don't say it. See, you screwed me up again. Carrera is going to explain to us the health insurance proposal, which is the next.
From our paused session and return to open meeting, all members being here, we will continue to use our voice concern. So I'm going to go back to the agenda and see the town administrator's contract. And I want to report that in a bit of a surprise to me even, in that time, we were able to negotiate aspects of the contract which we feel will be helpful to the town. And we were able to successfully bring on board.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we vote to approve and ratify the contract between the Town of Dartmouth and Cody Hadad as the town administrator effective July 28, 2025.
Seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Board, any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cody.
All we need now is Cody's signature on the contract.
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming in tonight and sharing a little bit more about yourself. The things that we heard tonight, and I'm going to speak for myself, were things that I really feel the Town of Dartmouth is in need of the leadership that you discussed. And so the big shoes that you created tonight, you will fill or start to fill on July 28. And I look forward to seeing you.
Very excited. Thank you all.
Wonderful. Thank you. Melanie has your information. All right. I'm going to skip around because I'm waiting for some folks. So I'm going to move to E, our change of manager at Joe's Original, 61 State Road. And I know that we have Janelle Gertrich in the house, as it were. So welcome, Janelle.
Thank you.
We have paperwork in front of us that states that you are the change of manager. You are the new manager. Judy Silverstein completed the paperwork for us. And you have all the certifications that you need to, to be successful in your role. Do I have any questions from members of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Discussion on the floor. Seeing none, ready to vote. All in favor of Janelle Gertrich becoming the manager at the Joe's Original on State Road. Say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Janelle. Okay. The next one we have, we're going to go with is the Greater New Bedford Vocational School Committee representative. We have information from Kent Genthner, Secretary to the Superintendent for Dartmouth Public Schools, that Dr. Cynthia Marlin, the school committee voted on April 14, 2025, to reappoint Dr. Cynthia Marlin as the Dartmouth member to the Greater New Bedford Vocational School Committee.
Motion to appoint.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. This position would, her current is set to expire May 1, so this would take her record of attendance in the last four years, 49 meetings. She attended all of them. Just a little background. So, any questions or comments on Dr. Marlin's appointment? Seeing none, the board vote in favor of reappointing Dr. Cynthia Marlin to the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Okay. Continuing. Joint Transportation Planning Group, otherwise known as the GTPG, reappointment of Tim Barber. So this is a SERPED think tank. And having looked into this, they meet the second Wednesday of every month at 2:00. What it asks us is to not only appoint or reappoint Tim, but also to make sure we appoint an alternate. If Tim is unable to attend that meeting, we have an alternate in place. So you can find that information.
On page 30. Yes. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Tim Barber as the representative to the Joint Transportation Planning Group and as the alternate, be Sandra Waterman, the Assistant Director of DPW.
Seconded. Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. O'Neill, to appoint Tim Barber to the JTPG and the alternative to be Sandra Waterman. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. So thank you. We're going to take the bunch before we get to the 6:30. So, all right, Mr. Kader, no, don't say it. See, you screwed me up again. Carrera is going to explain to us the health insurance proposal, which is the next item.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. As part of the process of meeting with the Insurance Advisory Committee, we had, I had gotten some feedback from employees that are close to retirement, within the 60 to 63-year age-old range, and not eligible yet from Medicare. So what I'm proposing for the board to consider, and it doesn't need a vote, but what I'm proposing is that allowing those employees to stay on the insurance for the high deductible plan. And in the most vulnerable time, when you're going to retire and you're on a fixed budget, we would have them switch over to the high deductible plan. On average, it's about 73 employees per year. That fluctuates as people retire and come in and on or off the system. And it's about a $50,000 cost to the town. And also, I think it helps with retainage. And once we're hiring people, we let them know, you know, you have the ability to stay on, as I mentioned, in the most vulnerable time, to have someone go into a plan that's very expensive for the employee. I think that it's something that the board should consider. And I'd be able to discuss that with the board even further.
The option right now for someone that retires is to maintain their current health insurance plan.
Correct.
Which is the non-high deductible, but it reverts to the 50-50 split.
Correct. So we would let them stay on the high deductible. And the cost of the town, on average, would be about $50,000. As mentioned, I think that for employees coming on, I think it's good to offer as part of a package when they're going to get hired.
Sounds reasonable.
So do you want to?
If the board feels like they need to take a vote on this, that would help us.
To prepare something?
Yeah.
For us?
In writing, I think that.
It should be in writing. Let's have that at the next meeting.
Would the May 5 meeting be too soon, Gary? Or do you want the May 19?
We needed, I really wanted to get this on the agenda for tonight and the blessing for the board, just so that I could present this again to the IAC once we meet. We'll draft something up.
So when do you think you'd be able to come back to this board?
Next meeting. Go to the next meeting, yeah.
Monday?
On the 5th.
The 5th? That's a quick turnaround. Okay. All right.
I'd like to get a feel from the board.
I think it's reasonable.
Yeah. My only point to be made is just this whole thing about being competitive. You know, I mean, they're not thinking about that option when they're 59. They're thinking about it when they're 45 with a town that gives them the option to do just that. So I think it's an important piece of the whole health insurance proposal that we have for the employees in the town.
Anyone on this side? Mr. Mickelson or Mr. Tattelbaum? All right. So do you want us to vote on that? Or do you, I think we've given you our.
That's good. I'll have HR prepare something so that the board can review.
All right. Thank you. We have a few more minutes. Can we talk about the next item? Economic Development Task Force?
Yes.
Or do you want to hold off on that?
I can talk about that briefly. So, ever we review the master plan, the Economic Development Task Force that I guess we used to have at one point in time, that kind of, I don't want to say dissolved, but maybe is not as active as it was, talks about, through the master plan, the ability to look at vacancies that are in town on storefronts. I think that we've gotten away from that a little bit. And the proposal I would make is we regroup. And we have that ability to reach out to the residents, reach out to the business owners in town, whether it's a box store, it's a small mom and pop store, and engage in conversation. We look at the Route 6 corridor along Faunce Corner Road. There's a lot of underutilized businesses that come in. You see that there's some storefronts now that are vacant, Christmas Tree Shop being one of them. And I think for the longevity and prosperity of the town, they are 20% of the tax base that we look at bringing this group together to talk to business owners and businesses in town. I've had business owners approach me on this. And I think it's vital now where we just don't say, well, you know, one's open, we're going to hope that someone comes in. And I think that's maybe the practice, but I think we need to be a little bit more proactive. So I'm just going by what's on the master plan. And if the board needed me to engage that, get the new list of openings for storefronts that we see, and be proactive and go out there and market the town. The whole Route 6 corridor is sewn and watered. So we need to, I think, take a more positive approach on that. And that's, I think I just want to feel back, feedback from the town, excuse me, the board.
Could you tell me who, or us, who previously had been a part of the Economic Development Task Force?
So, if you turn back the clock about six years ago, it was the Development Office. Deborah Wendell was part of that.
Okay.
And then it morphed over to Cody, and then it morphed over to the assistant. But I think that without the guidance of a committee, so to speak, we really don't know what the business owners in town are actually envisioning. And I think that that's part of what the master plan talked about, you know, utilizing that Route 6 corridor and other spots in town that are geared for economic development.
Mr. Tom.
Yes, Mr. Tom.
Stan and I did years back a little work, and we actually contacted some of the landlords. And it's a little peculiar because we're a public entity trying to talk to a private developer. So I think, and I'm not sure how far we got, we got some strange replies as well. And I think it's important to develop some kind of a strategy that says, okay, what can we do and offer? And then consistently go out and offer it to, you know, these landlords and potential places. And I think that was the biggest issue we had. It just, you know, what can we actually do? And what can we offer? And who can we then bring in to help us out to do it? It has great potential because there's a lot of empty space, but what can we, so I think that that's important to set that, maybe like a mission. What are we trying to actually do? And what power do we actually have and authority? Because you like to think we can redevelop some of that stuff and not go elsewhere into places where, you know, you're going to cut down trees and redevelop empty land as opposed to emphasize what we already have that's being underutilized.
I think it's also timely because just recently, we lost out on an Audi dealership for a variety of issues. And I'd like, in the future, us to be able to be proactive in that. When a company comes to us.
Developing.
How can we support them? So is it something that I, it's something I'm envisioning that we would have planning and building departments be?
Planning, building, DPW, all the, even more so, planning. And, you know, we talk about, like, you know, you have these businesses coming in, like the big box stores. But I think it goes a little bit beyond that. It's not only selling Dartmouth, but making them know that, you know, Dartmouth is prepared to take them in, and we have an, you know, we're open for business kind of mentality. And I think that that list needs to be updated, number one, and then brought to this committee. To Mr. Tattelbaum's point, I think that, you know, if you look at the Economic Development Plan, excuse me, the master plan, it talks about those key criteria that you're speaking of and the mission that I think would give guidance to this committee. So if the board feels that that's, you know, one of the priorities, I'd be glad to work on that and get the group organized.
Madam Chair, my own comment on that is I think we've got the glue now to actually get this back up and running. Cody, discussing with him about economic development and his experience doing that in Dartmouth and also in Halifax, also with his experience on the housing production plan in Dartmouth that he had worked on, you know, you talk about, like Circuit City on the Route 6 side, and you think about the development on the right-hand side of Faunce Corner Road prior to 195. And, you know, you look at the master plan, and it talks about mixed-use development in Overlake districts and the use of those things in order to spur smart, slow growth. And I think an Economic Development Task Force with him at the helm, bringing the relative departments together would be a great thing for the town. He's got experience with block grants also. And actually, you know, once again, the town reaching out when it comes to grant writing. So I would say that it's going to be on Cody's shortlist as far as I'm concerned.
And now's the time.
Yeah.
Ms. McDonald?
No, it's just, committee was there before. They looked at other things. They looked at, you know, different, contacting different businesses to come in. We also know social media is dying for a Trader Joe's to come in town. You know, what better place than the old Christmas Tree Shop? If you're out there, I mean, I even contacted them, and I told them, and they don't want to hear it.
Exactly.
But, I mean, you know, it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity there. But what's also needed is, we also had discussions, you know, with, you know, the large areas of the mall, you know, of having, you know, housing being built on mall property as a kind of a co-
Mixed use.
Co-mixed use type of thing, something like that. So, I mean, but the one thing that really has to, has to be developed, okay, that's the relationship between the businesses and the town. The town can do all the marketing possible, but then when it comes time to do all the permitting, can't make it difficult, you know, because, I mean, to be honest with you, the town has a reputation to be very difficult to work with, you know. But, you know, it's, we have regulations. We have things that have to be looked at. Not only do you have our regulations, you have state regulations, you have, you know, national regulations, you know, especially when it comes to, you know, wetlands. So there are certain things that need to be done. But there also has to be some, you know, some thinking in town to say, you know, when you have an area of town that has different types of building, you know, has factories, has shopping centers, has offices, you know, in what looks like shopping centers, has a jail, you know, and then a dealership comes in and wants to build a building, and they, you know, they have a national brand look. And then, you know, somebody basically says, well, you know, you want to go New England architecture, you know. Where's the New England architecture on, you know, in that corridor? You know, there isn't, except for the homes that are being bought by the developers to build buildings. So, I mean, there has to be some kind of thought process in a lot of this, where the town is willing to bend but not break on its regulations. And the developer also has to be, you know, amiable in doing this. And, you know, currently, we do know there are a couple of big property owners out there that are very difficult to work with. We've dealt with them in the past. And I'm sure nothing's changed since. So there's only so much we can do.
I think we're looking at two things, too. We're looking at the current empty inventory. But we also need to look at the tracts of land that we have for potential development to see who we can bring in to those areas.
Yeah, I mean, I think the.
Stan?
So there's a prime example, and we're looking at it every day up Route 6, is Lincoln Park. Originally, when that was proposed, there was a mixed-use plan for Route 6 along that corridor, right on that street, on that highway. And we, I don't know what happened, but the developer, the owners decided not to do it. But it's a prime piece of property. And the, all the plans are still in place. It's not that they have to redo it. We don't have to reinvent anything. We just have to get the owners involved to spend some money and actually implement that project.
Thank you, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Well, we have, if I may, the Finance Committee in front of us, you're interested in participation in this part of the discussion regarding economic development?
It's one of the four pieces that they're going to be talking to.
Was that what?
As soon as we trans, I've been holding off for 6:30, but now that we are, we're going to be moving in to FinPom.
I didn't realize that. My apologies.
Yep. Yep. We have, because that's what it stated on our.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I.
And the letter from Gary that was forwarded from Janine Simmons states that is one of the four things.
I'm impressed on your timeframe.
Page 31.
Sticking to it.
Sticking to it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll just wrap up with this.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of April 28, 2025.
So, Madam Chair, I'll just wrap up with this on the Economic Development Task Force Initiative. To Mr. Tattelbaum's point, in the master plan, it talks about three goals. And this may be the mission statement, part of the mission statement, to advance and enable the diverse program of growth and redevelopment along the Route 6 corridor, which is what we just talked about, explore economic development on key sites with existing or potential infrastructure services, and to pursue innovative specialized process improvements that lead to better outcomes for Dartmouth's local economy. So I think that those, that should be the foundation for committee going forward.
Thank you. Do you need us to vote on our support?
I would.
Are you hearing?
Seeing that we have the committee already established.
Yep. Just reestablish it.
I think maybe just moving forward, we want to stop looking at inventory and what is out there and what the options are, putting, regrouping, if you will.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. So now it has come to our time. We're having a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee has supplied us with a priority checklist to review, and that is economic development, grants, and short-term and long-term capital projects. So I turn to Gary and the FinPom.
Look it in.
Didn't, I should have talked slower.
Is it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So members of the Select Board, members of the Finance Committee and town residents, tonight I present to you the budget preview for the Town of Dartmouth for fiscal '26. This year's budget development process has been particularly challenging due to several economic and operational factors affecting municipalities across the Commonwealth. I want to outline these challenges while maintaining Dartmouth's tradition of fiscal responsibility, reserving essential services for our community of over 33,000 residents. So what I'm going to do here is go over a few slides that talk about the budget in brief. Then I'll turn it back over to the Chair. The Select Board asks for discussion for the joint meeting. So when we talk about general fund operating expenses, we talk about the schools, public safety, public works, community services, general government, debt service, benefits, and insurance. This is what makes up the key components of expenses through our budget. This is how it looks on the pie. You know, 57% of it is the schools. As we know, it's the biggest piece of the budget. Debt service at 4%, general government 5%, community services at 3%, public works at 4%, public safety at 10%. Now, what makes up the revenues? Property taxes, the biggest piece of that, state aid, local receipts, overhead and indirect costs that we charge back to the enterprise funds, and other available funds as far as grants, and so on and so forth. Here's how it looks on the chart. Property taxes being the biggest source of revenue, as I mentioned, collected from residential and commercial property tax, state aid, which is funded by the state through the cherry sheet process, local receipts, which is motor vehicle, excise tax, meals tax, boat excise tax, penalties and interest, investment income, and overhead and indirect costs, which I just mentioned, we charge back to the enterprise funds. So property taxes and proposition two and a half, as you know, in Massachusetts, we are governed by proposition two and a half. It's circa 1980, never changed. What that does is add the increase to the base levy. And then on top of that, we add new growth, and then if in any overrides, if that was to be voted by the town. Once the levy limit is increased in any of the ways, it becomes a permanent amount to the base. So this is what we look like in fiscal '26. New growth at $800,000. I'll talk a little about that in a second. The two and a half is going to give us about 1.9% on top of the base levy, debt exclusions of 869, 313, when we went out to borrow, and the base levy of $76.1 million of property tax, again, which is the residential and commercial. So new growth trends. If you draw a baseline all the way across, which is the red line, you'll see that if you were to plus and minus this back and forth, you'd see that we're pretty much, we've been stagnant with new growth. 16, there was a blip, I believe that was Hawthorne Medical that had come in at that time. 26, we're looking at about a $200,000 increase in new growth. So right now, $600,000 for 25. We're looking at, excuse me, $200,000, that would be $800,000 for new growth for fiscal '26. So we've seen a slight increase, mainly for construction of new homes. But as the town, and, you know, we go back to the days of, you know, when we talk, the prior finance director, and I think he hit home on this, as the town becomes built, that available land is no longer there anymore. So the housing complexes that we see is not there anymore. So it doesn't, we add nothing to new growth. So that, you could see that number now maybe trend downward as we go forward, as land becomes less and less available. State aid trend, so it was requested by one of the Finance Committee. This year's budget development process has been particularly challenging due to several economic and operational factors affecting municipalities across the Commonwealth. I want to outline these challenges while maintaining Dartmouth's tradition of fiscal responsibility, reserving essential services for our community of over 33,000 residents. So, what I'm going to do here is go over a few slides that talk about the budget in brief. Then I'll turn it back over to the Chair, the Select Board, for discussion for the joint meeting. So, when we talk about general fund operating expenses, we talk about the schools, public safety, public works, community services, general government, debt service, benefits, and insurance. This is what makes up the key components of expenses through our budget. This is how it looks on the pie. You know, 57% of it is the schools. As we know, it's the biggest piece of the budget. Debt service at 4%, general government 5%, community services at 3%, public works at 4%, public safety at 10%. Now, what makes up the revenues? Property taxes, the biggest piece of that, state aid, local receipts, overhead indirect costs that we charge back to the enterprise funds, and other available funds as far as grants, so on and so forth. Here's how it looks on the chart. Property taxes being the biggest source of revenue, as I mentioned, collected from residential and commercial property tax. State aid, which is funded by the state through the cherry sheet process, local receipts, which is motor vehicle, excise tax, meals tax, boat excise tax, penalties and interest, investment income, and overhead indirect costs, which I just mentioned, we charge back to the enterprise funds. So, property taxes and proposition two and a half, as you know, in Massachusetts, we are governed by proposition two and a half. It's circa 1980. Never changed. What that does is add the increase to the base levy. And then on top of that, we add new growth and then, if in any overrides, if that was to be voted by the town. Once the levy limit is increased in any of the ways, it's the, becomes a permanent amount to the base. So, this is what we look like in fiscal '26. New growth at $800,000. I'll talk about, a little about that in a second. The two and a half is going to give us about 1.9% on top of the base levy. Debt exclusions of 869, 313, when we went out to borrow, and the base levy of $76.1 million of property tax, again, which is the residential and commercial. So, new growth trends. If you draw a baseline all the way across, which is the red line, you'll see that if you were to plus and minus this back and forth, you'd see that we're pretty much, we've been stagnant with new growth. 16, there was a blip, I believe that was Hawthorne Medical that had come in at that time. 26, we're looking at about a $200,000 increase in new growth. So, right now, at 600,000 for 25, we're looking at a, excuse me, 200,000, that'd be $800,000 for, for new growth for fiscal '26. So, we've seen a slight increase, mainly for construction of new homes. But as the town, and, you know, we, we go back to the days of, you know, when we talked, the prior Finance Director, and I think he hit home on this. As the town becomes built, that, that available land is no longer there anymore. So, the, the housing complexes that we see is not, is not there anymore. So, it doesn't, we add nothing to new growth. So, that, you could see that number now maybe trend downward as we go forward, as, as land becomes less and less available. State aid trend, so it was requested by one of the Finance Committee members that we look, members that we look at this for a number of years. If you look at 2009, this is no, this is no shock to anyone. The town does not rely a lot on state aid. Chapter 70 being the school state aid, chapter 90 being the state aid from the highway, for DPW, for roadway. In '26, we're looking at an additional $300,000 added to state aid. In, in January of this year, the governor spoke at the MMA conference. Her, her goal was to increase chapter 90 for the local roads. She wanted, she felt that the local roads and communities needed to be repaired desperately. And so, that is the increase that we've seen for state aid this year. If you drew a line across this, you would see that it's pretty flat all the way across. So, if we're looking at a $14.5 million state aid number, and we're looking at a $76 million tax levy, a lot of the rest of that is from local receipts. Five million of which motor vehicle excise tax make up, makes up of, it's, it's, that's the biggest piece of local receipts, of which we have no control over. We're dependent on how many people are buying new vehicles, how many people are registering vehicles. So, a lot of these numbers, my point is, the town does not have a lot of control over. You know, if you look at the dip there, part of that was part of the recession in 2008. It took a while for it to climb back up again. But we do not see and foresee major increases in state aid going forward. So, on the projected revenues, this is the FY '26 numbers. I'm projecting 79 million, 79.6 million in local tax. I'm looking at 14.6 million in state aid, local receipts, 10.9 million, and then other sources, indirect costs from the enterprise funds at 108 million. Again, a lot of these numbers that you see here, unless you have an override for tax levy, unless the state comes in with extra, extra dollars, and unless we increase local receipts by fines and penalties and everything else, there really is no room in the budget for new revenues. So, you know, we struggle with that at the Finance Committee level, and, and so does the Board when we try to balance the budget each year. And it becomes more and more difficult as these revenues become tighter. So, the budget, this budget represents a balanced approach in addressing immediate financial pressures while continuing to position the town for long-term fiscal health. Acknowledges the economic realities we face while maintaining our commitment to providing high-quality services to the community. The coming fiscal year will be, will require continued vigilance, flexibility, and collaboration with all departments and economic conditions involved. I want to express my appreciation to the Select Board, Finance Committee, schools. The department heads and staff worked diligently through this challenging budget development process. Their commitment to finding creative solutions while maintaining service excellence has been remarkable. In order for the town to retain this competitive advantage, it must continue to work together with all boards and committees, departments, and residents to ensure that Dartmouth will continue to remain one of the best places to live, work, and raise a family in the Commonwealth. Thank you. So, I turn it back to the Chair. One last thing. Make sure I don't forget this, because I know the person in the last seat will have me. So, we're talking about long-term capital. As you have probably seen, we've, have had multiple meetings over the last year and a half now. On the need for long-term capital and the, the talking about projects that have, that have been, you know, segregated at some points. I mean, I took tours of the, the water sewer treatment plant, and we're talking circa 1960. Schools that have, that have been out there for so long that need repair and replacement. So, what this committee has done, we, you know, first slide, we prioritize the long-term needs, Peytonham Bridge, middle school, this is only a few of them. High school, recreation center, COA improvements. Evaluating funding alternatives and timelines, 30- to 4-year implementation schedule with the payoff on that through borrowing. Trying to minimize the tax impact to the residents, evaluating the water and water wastewater long-term capital, which we've talked about. If you've visited the plant, you'll see the desperate need of that, also along with the schools that need desperate repair to their facilities. And how, you know, how do we fund this? With escalation of the rise of inflation, it gets more difficult to say that we're going to push these projects off and not address them immediately. We're adding millions of dollars to some of these projects that a few years ago would have been so much less, and which impacts the residents as far as the tax is concerned. It's built mainly of, comprised of the Select Board Capital Planning Committee, the shorter-term CIPC group that meets, the Finance Committee, Town Administration Finance School Committee, and the Board of Public Works. Some of the challenges that we faced in FY '26, both on the school and the town side, is, again, persistent inflation. You know, the cost of construction materials is 14% on average increase. Health insurance increases, 9% to 12.5% from MIA. Renewal rate as high as 19% in some MIA communities. And revenue constraints, as you heard, you know, there's been a grant funding clawback on a lot of this federal money that was, was out there. Local receipts growth that I just spoke about, and again, the proposition two and a half constraints. And that is the end of the presentation. So, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you for the-
Thank you. And I want to thank the FinCom for coming to our meeting this evening. And let's dive into this presentation and talk about, ironically, because we shifted some things, we just were hearing about the Economic Development Task Force, and certainly when we see the need for new growth and how we are limited by land availability and ways that we are going to see that growth and those taxes come into Dartmouth. Please tell us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Bob Garvin. I'm Chairman of the FinCom. Thank you for inviting us. I'd also like to thank Melissa Haskell for providing the committee with some very, very good and talented members. I'd like to introduce the members. I'd like to start off Terry Young. She's had a lot to do with the long-term capital. She was the past Chair and she was my mentor. To my right is Patrick Saunders. He's brand, brand new. He's a business owner, and he's caught on very, very quickly. To my left is Kerry Parsons. Kerry also is, is brand new. She's a nurse. She's becoming a professor at UMass Dartmouth. And she's going to do the presentation today on, on grants. And she also has children in the school system. To her left is Brian O'Hare. Brian's been a longtime member, and he's actually going to talk about needs for change, and he's going to take it from actuals to projections in the future. To the left is Janine Simmons. She's my Vice Chair, and I could not ask for a better Vice Chair. She has a marketing background. Then Bill Bowles. Bill Bowles has an IT background. He was on the school committee. And so, he's, he's been with us for a while. And to his left, finally, is John Souza. John is kind of like a planning board guy. He's on the planning board for so long, so he kind of helps us get through some of the minutia from the planning board. I'm going to start out, and we're going to talk about actuals, and Gary, can you bring those up? One of the things, I mean, every year, we talk about budgets, 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 but actuals really, one, they're not political, and, two, they, they really give you a good picture on where the the stress on the budget is coming from. So, so what we did is we went back three years. The reason we went back three years is because there was so much COVID stuff going on that it really wasn't really a good indication of where some of the issues are coming forward. Okay, so. So, what you have here, and this-
Mary font.
Maybe a little smaller, maybe.
So, the first part is the taxes. It's fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2023, and fiscal year 2024. And, you know, every year, we have year-over-year percentage increases for '23 and '24. But I'd like to concentrate on the two-year average, because that really tells a story. Personal property taxes went up, and that's the, a, a big part of the, the revenue, 7.3%. And that was the part that Gary talked about, is you really don't have a lot of control over. Real estate taxes increased 3.5% on average over two years. And the motor vehicle taxes, 8.7% over two years. So, there's a lot of little small items, but when you look at the, the total taxes, the total tax base, you averaged 4.2% increase in revenue. Okay, Gary, could you move up a little bit?
Sorry, he's doing two jobs.
Oh, okay. The next part is other revenue, and the, these are smaller dollar amounts, but, you know, they do, you know, all these other different, the fees and charges for services, average 8.2% increase. So, total, what I call total resident revenue averaged 4.4% over two years. Again, these are actuals. So, then you go down to the next line, and you look at state revenues. And this is really the eye-opener, where you can see that state aid, chapter 70 money averaged 2% for over two years. And when you look at all the different, you know, different numbers, the total state revenue averaged 2.2%. Now, I should, I should say that there's two things that we eliminated from here. One was debt service. We eliminated in school construction, because debt service is managed in a different way than these expenses. These are actual numbers, dollars going out the door. Or coming in the door. So, clearly, state aid doesn't even, 2% doesn't even keep up with, with, with inflation. And what, and what that ends up being is, it puts more, by not having the state aid keep up, at least with inflation, it puts more burden on the Town of Dartmouth taxpayers. So, so the, the revenue, total resident, resident revenue was 4.1. Total state aid was 2.2, so total revenue average increased 4.1% overall for the, for the, for the year.
Can I ask a question? Quick question. Do we know the state aid is reduced because state aid is down in general? Or because it penalizes us because they think we're better off than other towns and cities?
In my opinion, my opinion, the calculation for state aid is a Ivy League socioeconomic calculation. And, and some of the, when you see the No Bedford, the Bedford numbers, you'll see that we definitely are penalized, and a lot of other towns similar to us are in the same situation.
Yeah, I can maybe a little, shed a little bit of light on that, too. Over the years, you, you've seen communities like Dartmouth, which have socioeconomic, you know, state thinks, oh, we have the ability to pay bills, and, and in combination with a low tax rate. So, the answer from the state is tax the residents more, so that you can get out of the hole that you're in. And unfortunately, like communities like Dartmouth, to compare us to a larger city, really, it's an apple to oranges, but because the socioeconomics in those communities are a lot different. But the challenge still remains that the town has, as you've seen through the charts, continues to get minimal amount of state aid. And whether that means sometimes bringing our reps in and challenging that, I think, you know, it may get to that point.
I do know that last year, they made a considerable change to the formula based on the pressure that they had received from rural towns, and the reps from those rural towns who went and asked for a change. And so, it, it's clear that we and other similar towns to us need to do something.
There was a collaborative amongst many communities that were like in kind, you know, that, that got out there and said, listen, you know, the lion's share of this is going to Boston, and even subject to that whole area, the, the North Shore. But what about us in the, in the South Coast? What about out in the Berkshires? You know, so there's, there's still, the need is still there. It's just how it gets addressed at the state level.
Thank you. So, could you bring up the expenses? Okay.
He's probably going to hit on it. I was going to ask you about the debt, the actual debt, the ratios.
Yeah, we, we, we're not addressing that, because, like I said, when we started this, we're really just looking at actual expenses that go out day-to-day. Debt exclusions and, and borrowing, those are really a different decision. As far as, you know, if you're going to build a building or things like that.
Yeah, I could talk briefly about that. So, the state allows us to borrow amongst its EQV, the equalized value of the town. Right now, the town has about $7 billion in taxed assets, which means commercial and residential real estate. So, we're allowed to borrow a percentage of that. The borrowing power of the town right now is about $250 million of capacity. We are nowhere near that. We have the school that ran off, we have the police and the station and the library. So, we have plenty of capacity to borrow.
What's the limit now? Do you know enough, Han? Debt limit right now?
I'm not, I'm right off the top of my head. But, but we have the capacity to borrow for any big project that would come, come our way, multiple projects in some sense. So, some of it's, obviously, as you know, the general fund, and then some of it is charged to the ratepayers for water and sewer.
And you and I, Gary, we talked about the, the state aid calculation. Do we know of any towns that have been successful going back to the state and doing the study?
Town of Westport.
Town of Westport did it, okay.
And they did it, and more research that I had done, and we talked briefly with the schools on this a few years ago. It's, I don't want to say it's more of a lottery system, but digging into it more deeper, it was, you know, the state comes to you and says, okay, chapter 70 is low. We're going to, we're going to give you more chapter 70. But, again, I think that it, it needs a conversation with the local reps, having them in and having that conversation, because it's never really been had. The authority stands with the communities that are larger. They have the, the buying power and all this.
The thing that is precarious, obviously, is that if we do the study and we're not that far off, then we jeopardize ourselves on the other side. So, I, I guess we need to really try and delve down internally to see, to try and get a hard estimate on whether we make the case, and we bring everybody together and go as, as one concerted group to trying, to try and make our case.
Yeah, and I, not only to that point, I think that you'll have other communities in the same boat, so it'd be even better if you had other communities lobbying for this at the, at the state level. You know, I, I know we're concerned mainly about Dartmouth.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, and I think the power is going to the state and saying, listen, it is time to relook at the calculations.
Did, did Westport join the rural communities?
No, this was done, this was done a few years ago.
I know they were mostly Western Massachusetts.
And I think, I don't know if it was the chapter 90 or chapter 70, but they had gotten an additional like $400,000 put into that cherry sheet. Now, remember, that's just not one year. That's forever. So, I'm, I'm happy to work with the schools to revisit that. I know that we talked to the schools on that when a new superintendent came in, so I'm glad to work with the schools to revisit that.
I think that's a huge priority for the town right now. We need to spend some time and energy on trying to make sure that we're, we're where we should be. And if not, how do we get there?
And when we're looking at long-term projects, we need to look at those that we can borrow for.
Yeah, most, most of the projects you can borrow for. The town has plenty of capacity to borrow.
Madam Chair, just, just, just one quickly. The biggest, the biggest issue with the state aid formula, it's, it's basically suburban versus urban. And Dartmouth, Westport, Berkeley, Lakeville, Freetown, are kind of unique, because we're stuck in between three urban communities. There aren't that many communities in, in the Commonwealth that, that are like that. And I, and, and all of us within this urban triangle get jeopardized because of, because of Taunton, Dubeford, and Fall River. You know, each one of us has a segment of, you know, our own municipality that basically looks exactly like a city, you know, like a city neighborhood. You know, Liskwana is one of them, you know. But, and, and I don't, I know we've talked to our reps about this before, but the problem is, is our reps are not on the correct committees. They're not, they're not on the ways and means, except by Senator, but I, I'm going to get shit for this. Our Senator seems to be doing a good job, but he needs to do a better job. Especially- with the cachet he has in the number of years. The South Coast, in its entirety, has been, always been, the redheaded stepchild of the state of Massachusetts.
Present company.
Seriously, well, you're, you're no longer, that red is kinda quickly going away. But, I mean, that's just, just, just the way it is, the way it's been. And, and until such a time, when all the communities in the South Coast rise up and sit down together and tell the state, hey, we're part of Massachusetts, too, you've gotta start looking at us. And I'll be honest with you, we don't. Shame on us. Shame on us.
Can I continue?
Go ahead.
All right. So again, these are actuals, so they're not political, okay? So if you look at general government, and this actually shocked me, 11.3% increase two years. Public safety, 1%. Public works, well, community services, 2.6. Public works, 0.9. But public works, just because of the, the type of business they're in, is very volatile. You can see, it was down 11% year over year from '22 to '21, and then up 14.3%. So that, I'm sure that has to do with projects that they're working on. The schools, 4.7%. I guess that's kinda what, what I expected. But when you look at 4.7% and Chapter 70 money at 2, the difference between that is the, is burdened on the, on the taxpayers. The, the Bedford Voke, we obviously have no control over that, but it's 5.5% increase. And employee benefits, I, I thought would be higher, though, you know, because I, I, you know, I had my own opinions going into this. And then property and liability insurance, obviously, that, that's hitting every individual and all businesses around. So, so we ended up with 4%, increase in, well, increase in expenses year over year, and revenue 4.1%. And then you can see the differences, and that's what ends up being used for capital projects. My own opinion on, on the, the Mass, if you ask me my opinion, I would recommend that you bring in Senator Markey and Sen, most, no.
Representative.
Representative Markey and Senator Montigny to a meeting. I've, I've met with State Representative Markey for breakfast, and I talked to him about this, and there's, he really didn't have any solutions. It's Proposition Two and a Half. So, so again, you know, we've never looked at, we've never looked at actuals, and I thought it would, I, I think there's some really good information, and you can see, I, I think general government really, you know, why 11.3%? I think that's something that should be looked into. Why that, you know? And it's gotta be people, because that's really what's there. Does anybody have any questions on the actuals? And do everybody understand why we did it? Okay.
Good job.
Okay. So, based on that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Brian O'Hare, and he's gonna take the actuals, and he's gonna put it into projections.
Okay, you gotta get my.
Oh, I gotta bring it up.
The one that's Dartmouth General Fund expenditure. While, while he's doing that, these are the charts that we're gonna include on the letter that we sent to town meeting prior to the budget submission. And while he's doing that, also, I'll mention that the, the data for all these things comes from the Mass DLS, Mass DOR, U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, the UMass Donu Institute, which has to do with population growth and various cost of community services studies. So what this chart says, and it's broken up into a projection to the right hand of that vertical dotted line, and also actuals. What this says, based on a compound average growth rate, and a compound average growth rate is an average rate at which expenditures have grown, is that the compound average growth rate for Dartmouth has been 3.23% every year. And it started off with a budget back in 2015, an actual budget of 77, 77 million and change, and in 2024, went up to 102 million in change. If the budgets keep going at a compound average growth rate of 3.23%, it could be as high as 124 million and change by 2030. So that means that between 2015 and 2030, there's been a 61% increase in the budget. And the second chart. Second chart shows how much we rely on single-family tax bills. This is a chart that goes from 2016 to 2031. In the beginning of the chart, which is 2015, 16, rather, the average household bill for residential taxes was $3,578. And in 2025, the average family was paying $5,031. And that's based with a house value of $609,104. If you project that at the 3.86 compound average growth, which is the difference, how much it's gone up since 2017 to 2025, taxes could be at $6,314, which doesn't even include any increases in things like refuse removal, sewer, water, and fire protection bills. And it assumes also that the compound average growth rate is going forward is gonna be equal to what it was in the past, which I suspect it's not going to be. So, because of inflation and whatever else is gonna go on. So essentially, we're gonna be going up in the average tax rate. This next chart shows per capita income analysis for Dartmouth between 20, the year 2000 and 2025. So just to make sure everybody understands, per capita income is the average income per person in a geographic area, and it's calculated by dividing the total income by the population. So what this chart says is Dartmouth's normal per capita income grew from $24,326 in 2000 to an estimated $52,098 in 2025, representing 114% increase. When adjusted for inflation, though, in $2,025, and that's where you see the green line and the blue line coming together, the real income growth was more modest. It went from $52,000 to 44.62, a 17% decrease. The compound annual growth rate was 3.09 for the nominal income, but only 6.62 for real income, showing the significant impact of inflation. And what this all leads up to is the ability to pay bills, tax bills. The 2020 to 2023 period shows a decline in real income, despite nominal growth reflecting high inflation during that period. When adjusted for local cost of living, the 2023 per capita income of $49,149 is equivalent to only $37,178 in areas with average U.S. costs. So there's less money available to pay taxes because of inflation. This next chart, and this is where this starts getting interesting in terms of being able to finance things going forward, shows population trends by age group in 2015 to 2024. So what the chart says on the left-hand side is the growth percent, and on the bottom axis, it's the various age groups. The median age, a median age is the age at which half of the population is older and the other half is younger, has increased from 43.2 in 2015 to 45.9 in 2024, which indicates that Dartmouth is getting older. The significant growth in senior population, that means the 65 to 74 group, has increased by 35.3%, and the 55 to 64 age group has grown by 21.4%. These groups are probably relying on fixed income. So we're trying to get more taxes from people who have less money because of inflation. And that group is getting larger in town, and that has implications, too, in how many services and what kind of services we have to provide. The notable decreases in the 45 to 54 age group has declined by 21%. So the problem with this is, that's the peak earning group, and it's gone down by 21%. So these are the folks most able and most likely to be able to sustain tax increases. But it's actually going down, so there are less of these people in town than there were. There's been a modest increase in young adult population. The town's total population has grown only by 2% over the decade. So it's essentially flat. Nobody's coming here. People are leaving, and we're getting older, which has implications for taxes.
Not a good combination.
So we talked about state aid. Nobody mentioned the factors inflation. This chart, the green line shows a trend line, which is 23.97%. But if you factor in inflation and you look at the trend, it's actually less. So the nominal state aid increased by 23.9% over the decade. The average, and the average growth rate was 2.17%. When adjusted for inflation, state aid actually decreased by 8.57% in real terms. Only one year, 2021, showed a nominal decrease in funding. The highest annual increase was 25, 2025, at 4.84%. Inflation has significantly eroded the purchasing power of state aid, so we're actually getting less money from the state, and it's gonna get worse. We talked about a few minutes ago, and I'll talk more about this later, when we talk about our recommendations as the Finance Committee for Economic Development. The, this is, Gary touched upon it, this is Dartmouth property class as a percentage of new growth. The blue line shows residential, the green line shows commercial, and the, I guess that's gold, shows industrial. And what that shows is, the residential has gone up, and it's continuing to go up, but our ability to keep and attract and get taxes out of the industrial and commercial have gone down. So that means that we're, we're not getting people in here on the commercial and industrial, and more and more of the tax burden is falling on residential folks who are getting older, don't have the income, and we also have that little blip of people in high-income earning years leaving town. In 2034, the residential property represented 82.1% of new growth, commercial at 11.9%, and industrial at 6.0. In 2024, residential had increased to 88.6, while commercial declined to 7.5, and industrial to 4.0. The shift accelerated during the 2019 to 21 period, which is pandemic period, when the commercial new growth fell by nearly 17%, while residential continued to grow at almost 20%. The implications of all these things are tax-based vulnerability. Dartmouth's increasing reliance on residential property for new growth rates potential volatility is seen if we have economic turn-downs that affect how much the housing costs are, and will make significant impact on revenues. Service demands. Community service studies have shown that residential taxes typically, residential properties typically demand more municipal services, schools, public safety, infrastructure, than they generate in tax revenue compared to commercial and industrial. So that clearly says that we should be looking at trying to get more commercial and industrial here. And if we are gonna go after increasing residential, it should be for empty nesters who don't draw as many, excuse me, as many resident, as many services from the town. And it also shows a fiscal imbalance. The declining share of commercial and industrial growth also may lead to increasing tax pressure on residential property folks over time. And it shows limited diversification. The town's growth is increasingly tied to residential market circle reducing economic diversification. So if we get hit with a housing downturn, it's gonna affect our ability to generate revenues. So this is, these, these parts are gonna be in the letter to folks who are on the town meeting members. And what we hope, as well as people here tonight, what we hope you get, get from this is that the realization that we need to be even more deliberate in how we make our expenditures, where we get the money to make those expenditures, and that we need to be constantly looking at making our expenditures more effective and efficient. It also is the basis for, Kerry is now getting up, we're gonna make two recommendations to you folks. One has to do with grants and grant writing, and the second has to do with economic development.
Thank you. Mr. Talabon.
Brian, that was a, a simple explanation, it really cleared, really good job. The vice for the homeowner is that we haven't changed the tax rate in years. It's the inflated value of the house that's added to tax pay, so it puts another squeeze, because these are people who are not, many of which are not adding to their income on fixed income, and that they have to pay more tax because the house is going up in value.
Right. And they have, and if you remember, they have less income now than they had before because of inflation.
It's a tremendous squeeze, and they have no control because.
And then the folks that should be giving us the most revenue are leaving town.
All right, we haven't changed the rate in a long time. It's all, it's all goes back to the value of the house. Great job.
A lot of people say that, she's, my taxes went up, but they only went up because the value went up. We actually lowered the taxes.
And you lowered the taxes, so you wanna pay more or the same.
Good job.
Mr. Mickelson, do you have anything?
So, my press boss once said to me, if you come to me with a problem, come to me with a solution. We don't have all the solutions, but Kerry's gonna do a thing with grants. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kerry Parsons.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a short presentation here on grants. We've identified a lot of problems tonight. The town is burdened with a lot of financial needs that are coming mostly from our residents, and so moving forward, we're trying to find ways of increasing revenues to try to ease the burden on our residents. So one of the things that we can really optimize is grants. So, you know, this chart shows us that we're, we've been kind of plateaued with our grants, and we would like to optimize that more. So the Finance Committee is recommending to the, the Select Board that the idea of possibly hiring a dedicated grant writer. So our department heads have expressed concerns about the lack of time and expertise needed to pursue grant opportunities effectively. So in response, we've put this little presentation together. If our department heads are identifying that they could get these grants, but either don't know how to write the grants, don't have the time to write the grants, so let's just keep moving on with this. just keep moving on with this. So here's the grants that we generally have had between 2014 and 2025, and they've been pretty consistent, and we've heard more about chapter 70 throughout this meeting. So for some context, we've had a grant writer in the past, somewhere around 2010. We haven't had one since then, so that was, you know, 15 years ago. So if you look here, the return on investment if we were to hire a grant writer, and this could be two different ways we could do this. We could hire them as town employees, or we could hire them as being...
Contracted.
Contracted, thank you. Mental block there. So, but either way, there's a return on investment. If we just increase our revenue through grants by just 5%, our return on investment is hypothetically 465%. So potentially, that would pay for the grant writer, and then also generate more revenue for the town. So the recommendation is that based on the analysis of Dartmouth's grant funding history and potential returns, hiring a dedicated grant writer would likely provide significant financial benefits to the town. So we'd have a positive return on investment, even a modest 5% increase in grant funding would yield a 465% return on the investment. That is, of course, if they can be successful with getting the grant forward. I think one of the issues that we see in town a lot is we're not grant writers, right? This is really, writing a grant, I don't know if anybody's ever done one, they're difficult. They're entailed, there's so much involved with it. So to have somebody that knows how to do this and knows how to, you know, bring it all the way through and get the money for the town would be really beneficial. So consistent funding, having regular grants shown steady growth, suggested continual opportunities for expansion. There's a competitive advantage, a professional grant writer can identify and secure grants that might otherwise be missed by department heads with other primary responsibilities. Reduced burden, department heads can focus on their core responsibilities rather than grant writing, and expertise and quality, professional grant writers typically have higher success rates due to their specialized knowledge and experience. This really goes back to what I was saying, the burden of writing these grants is always falling on the department heads, and we really need to kind of find that free money that's out there and bring it to us, and that's really what we should be focusing on. So this chart right here is showing you just, I made this chart from the fiscal year of '23 to '24, and how much money we actually got from grants, which was roughly $210,300. This may be a little bit off. I've been, Gary's been working on confirming that these are accurate numbers, but I did this because I wanted you to see that potentially, that's how much more is out there. So, you know, this is free money if we can access it. So, again, we recommend a grant writer. It would increase our funding, potentially increasing over a million in additional grants annually. The expertise is professional grant writers specialize in crafting these. They're efficient, faster turnaround rates for the application with less burden on our department heads, strategy, the ability to align grant pursuits with Dartmouth's long-term goals and needs. Creating connections with funding agencies can lead to more successful awards, and the flexibility, consultant services can be scaled to match departments' evolving needs without committing to a full-time salary and benefits. I just want to highlight that flexibility box there. If we don't want to hire somebody that's just dedicated, you know, where we're paying their benefits and that sort of thing, we may want to consider, very short here, so it's hard to see over, we may want to consider, you know, just doing consulting instead. I think the flip side to doing consulting is that you need to find someone that's motivated to, you know, find grants for us. If we hire somebody, then they're going to be motivated because their job may depend on it. If they can't get enough grants, you know, to pay their own salary, then, you know, they know that their position will probably be eventually terminated. So it's just something to think about. I think in the past, I've heard, I did a little research, I think the grant writer we had back in 2010 didn't just write grants, they had multi-functions, and I think that because the focus came off of grants and they were doing other things, that, you know, we had money that we probably could have gotten, but that grant writer didn't have the time to do the focus on that. Is there any questions? Or would you like to talk about it?
I'll make a clarifying statement. So Deb Molina-Wender was the last grant writer we had, and it was the Office of, you know, Development.
Yeah.
When she left, Cody Hadad was who replaced her, and that was his first order of business. During Mr. McGinnis's tenure here, he transferred him into an assistant town administrator role. Grant writing is still part of the job description of the assistant town administrator. So that is part right now of Chris Vitale's. And given the flexibility or fluctuations we've been in for the last almost year, I would say has impacted. I know myself, I've written grants, some successful, some not. The frustration is you never know what they're actually looking for until you see who they've awarded it to, and sometimes Dartmouth just doesn't fit their parameters, which is very frustrating. You don't know that until they make the award, and you see that the award money was given to every urban community in the state. But it is certainly something we can't afford to leave money on the table.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Talabon.
With that, thank you, great job.
Thank you.
I don't know if that $200,000 is accurate or not, but I do know that we spent in the last two to three years a ton of time creating grants for all the OPERA funds. It took yeoman's work, and there was a timetable involved, especially the DPW. So I know that's, I don't consider that a grant, but we, the number is in the millions, I think as much as 10 million that we had to write for. So I don't think we're sitting on our hands, but on the other hand, those other funds that are available through grants, we can certainly do a much better job and put the time in.
My concern there as well is that the OPERA funding came to us, and Dartmouth actually used it for needs, not wants, needs. And so, yes, the majority of our OPERA funding went towards projects for the DPW. If we hadn't had that, we'd be even in a worse position than we are now. And it is fearful, there is no more OPERA funding.
Right.
So.
Adam Chaff.
So this comes up, okay.
Okay. We're going to go on to long-term capital?
I'm sorry? No, I wanted to add Kerry's, and then I can talk about long-term capital. This comes up as a recommendation from the Finance Committee because this year, members of the Finance Committee sat in on Gary's meetings with department heads, and in our conversation, we heard several times, there was a grant for this, I looked at it, I tried to pull information together, but could not do that. So you're right, it's not a question of people ignoring things at all. I think people would like to do it. One of the models that is very successful in Dartmouth is the energy manager, which is a contract with somebody who does energy management. Department heads still have to be involved because they collect the data, they give the information to the grant writer, but we thought it would make a lot of sense to have a person whose primary focus is that.
Thank you.
I just, the other thing is that she mentioned, Kerry mentioned, that you can do it a bunch of different ways. You could have an outside company do it, and they get paid a percentage of what they get from the town, or there are other variations of it. So it's not just that you have to hire somebody, but you could even hire somebody and make their salary continue to run what they bring in.
Okay. Just one quick thing, there is a, there is a little bit of a downside to the grants. And the first and foremost is the requirements once you get the grant. But the biggest thing is what the grant is for. The grant should be used for non-reoccurring expenses. It should not be used for personnel because what happens, you get yourself, you get personnel, you want to keep the personnel, you can't get the grant the next year, now all of a sudden, you've got to go into your budget and get that. Where's that money coming from? And that is, that is one of the things with getting a grant, and every community has been guilty of it, clearly. But that's something that cannot be done. It's like the same, it's like the Select Board setting the policy years ago, you know, for free cash, is not to be used for reoccurring expenses.
One thing also, in my experience with the grant writers, Kerry, great job, the difference between the 1099 and the hire, I've always found the hire to do the better job. And both, you know, obviously depend on the person that you get, right? If you hire the consulting company and they do, you know, yeoman's work, then they can really take off with it. But in my experience, you know, the hire, because it's like, you know, when you're looking for a red car, the only thing you see are red cars, you know? That person who's dedicated for grant writing is just going to see the red cars. Where, you know, poor Tim in the DPW board, dealing with the OPERA applications, you know, on top of the 20 other things he's doing, the department heads can't do it. I completely agree with you. So it's proactive versus reactive. We need to be proactive. This is a great suggestion, in my opinion, and the hire usually does better, in my experience.
Yeah, I agree with you because when you hire somebody from the outside, they don't know where to go to get the information. If you have somebody that's within the system, it's much easier, so they know where to go. Okay. I'd like to lead in next into economic development, and that'll kind of close the loop.
Well, so...
Turn it over to Brian again.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to talk about long-term capital?
I'm going to do this first. That's our second recommendation, and then we can turn it back. So just let me add, Chris, the idea of hiring somebody, we've seen that hiring somebody to do that, it's too convenient and too easy to give that person other responsibilities. And those have diluted the ability of these people that we've had, as Heidi said, to go after competitive grants. And we're talking primarily about competitive grants because the allocations are in place.
Jim Kylie, do you have, in the school department, do you have a dedicated grant writer?
No.
No, okay.
His name is Mr. Kylie.
Are you sure, Jim?
Yeah. No.
So, excuse me, we have an assistant town administrator, and his sole job now will be grant writing.
Well, he's also in charge of economic development.
Right. He's got a few things in his...
60% of his time could be grant writing.
Well, let me show you about economic development.
I have his job description, and it is certainly something that we need to look at.
So we're going to go into economic development.
Mr. Sousa has his hand up.
Mr. Sousa has a comment.
A couple of comments on the grant writing. I hope the selectmen seriously consider our recommendation of hiring a dedicated grant writer, and in my opinion, not repeat some of the mistakes we've made in the past with grant writing is, you know, we just heard, well, we have a position as a dedicated grant writer. That's not an accurate statement. We've seen what's happened before. I saw what our first one with Deborah Molina-Wender, grant writer, economic development, reporting to the selectmen. Selectmen have a lot of issues, a lot of fires to put out, and she was diverted in many cases, and that's still going on today. So I think it's important, if you folks seriously consider this, that it be a dedicated grant writer. It probably should fall under the finance director, it's all financing, and not report directly to the town administrator, because I would hate to see us repeat that history again and have that person get, maybe the wrong term, hijacked for other priorities that the select board or the town administrator might have. We're leaving too much money on the table, we'll find out. We're leaving, when we spoke to, sorry, when we spoke to department heads, most of them, it was the same story. They don't have the time, they don't have the people to do the grants, and they're not getting the support from administration because you folks are busy doing other things and maybe chasing some other grants. We just thought there's too much being left on the table. Thank you.
I want to comment, if I may.
Yes.
All right. Kerry, you did a terrific job. I would like to say this, though, in the past, where we had experience with the assistant town administrator writing grants, and the failure to procure that grant, was there any learning involved, or what particular were the failing points, so we don't repeat these same things again? No. When I was leading projects, I always said, well, what was good and what was bad, and what could we do better? So with that being said, has there been any history accumulated in the past of why some of these grants failed and some were successful? Was that too hard to pinpoint? Because that way, going forward, we could have a better history on success.
It's a very good question. And to be honest, other than the grants that I've written, we really focused on OPERA. So I think that's certainly a conversation that I can have with the current assistant town administrator, Chris Vitale, and certainly reach out to Cody to see what he experienced in his tenure here. But great points all around, including that it should fall under Gary and not necessarily the town administrator, who would have probably more opportunity to load other things on that person's plate.
Yeah. I'm really curious to hear what Jim has to add to that. Do you think, I mean, in your experience, do you have, do you have opportunities that we've missed because you didn't have a dedicated person?
I don't think so, not from a school department perspective, no. We, for most of the competitive grants, we are at a significant disadvantage in that most of those go to a small, select number of communities that we don't look like. So, but we apply for all the grants that are available to us and, you know, have a significant amount of grant funding that we receive on an annual basis, so. But we do that in-house. Our directors of teaching and learning do a significant amount of the grant work as it relates to the Title I grant, which is a low-income grant, one of the larger grants that we have that has federal funding. And our student services department, so special education also has, you know, has some large grants that we receive. But no, I don't, from our perspective, I don't feel that there's a gap there.
Appreciate it.
As Jim just alluded to, it is something that we're watching because the changes in how federal money is going to be distributed, or may be distributed, is also something that's going to impact the state and impact certainly the Department of Education.
So besides grant writing and hiring a grant writer, upping our game in terms of grant writing, FinCom wants to very seriously recommend a very proactive business development, particularly around the Route 6 corridor. I showed this chart before, and what it shows is that with that blue line is we have an overemphasis and overreliance on residential taxes to fund what we spend our money on. And the green and the gold lines show that we are going down currently with relation to industrial and commercial. And so the dangers, sorry, the second one, please. So the dangers of residential tax-based reliance is the vulnerability. I covered some of these earlier. The vulnerability of an increasing reliance on residential property for new growth creates potential vulnerability as economic turn-downs affect housing and could significantly increase strain on us being able to get money out of that residential tax. Service demands, residential properties typically demand more municipal services than they generate in tax revenue compared to commercial and industrial properties. So it's a lot easier to have commercial industrial properties that require less from us. Fiscal imbalance, declining share of commercial and industrial, new growth may lead to increasing tax pressure on residential owners over time, and based on the way our population is going, it's probably not a good idea to be doing that. And then limited diversification, town's growth is increasingly tied to residential markets cycle, reducing economic diversification, and its ability to tax via the residential tax base without severely stressing the increasing number of 65 to 70-year-olds and those in the 55 to 64-year-old group and those in the 75-plus group. Next one, Gary, if you may. So the primary challenge of relying on residential... So, the primary challenge of relying on residential tax bases is to maintain service levels while keeping tax burdens manageable for residents despite the rising cost of municipal services. And we touched on how all things like salt, the DPW, they're all going up. Even the fees that consultants charge are going up. Our own, I can show you a graph on legal expenses for the town. That's gone through the roof. So things are going to be going up and up and up. And some of these dangers, I think, are already happening in Dartmouth. The first one is infrastructure deterioration, and that's deferred maintenance, which we talked about. I've been in some of these meetings, that they've been talking about, that it would take 30 million bucks over, I don't know how many years, to get the roads back up to the way they, they should be. Also, we all know we have issues with the water system, sewer system. And it's already impacting residential, especially the kind we need, which are empty nesters, which are going up on Dartmouth, Dartmouth Street, because there's some worry about the capacity of the sewer system to be able to handle that. And then, we talked roughly about, as it relates to even writing grants, administrative burden. People trying to do more with less people, and they can't do it. And the possible, so as a result of this, if you rely too much on residential, you may wind up having to do service reductions of what I would consider non-essential items like recreation programs, library hours, community events, and increased fees. So by relying too much on residential, we're not setting us up for improvements going forward. In the past, there have been a number of false starts, or at least information that was gathered, but I can't seem to find too much that was done with it. First one was a UMass study in 2007, which recommended the town and the university work together to create what they call university-based retirement communities. And you know that some places in the country have used that in relation to revitalizing commercial corridors like we have on Route 6. Also, there was a SERPED Economic Development District study that was done in 2015, which talked about land and market use conditions, strategies to build the success of the Route 6 corridor, and success stories in retail corridor transformation in other parts of the country. So, I've heard people talking about giving the assistant town administrator charge of economic development. You can't do it. It's just too much for one person to do and to do a good job, especially if they're going to be proactive in trying to do this. There was also a study, number three, the town hired Northeastern University, the Ducaca Center for Urban and Regional Policy School of Public Policy and Urban Affairs, and set up a study on how to develop the town's economic resources, and spelt out what the, I read it, it spelt out, I think they're pretty much the same, what the weaknesses were, and also what the strengths of Dartmouth were to actually develop economic, economic corridor. And then the final one was a SERPED study for Westport and Dartmouth Route 6 corridor study in 2022. And all of these, and this is why I think one person doing it part-time in addition to their other duties is probably not a good idea, because all of these studies have put together plans that require major changes on traffic flows on Route 6, so that you get a system that was developed for the 50s into the current year on how to handle traffic. They also talk about beautification. So it looks like, not the way it looks now, but it looks like it's suitable for mixed use, like UMass-Dartmouth talked about doing back in 2007. So this is a full-time job, and probably will require some kind of help for the town to actually actualize it. So our call to action for the residents and town meeting member is that their finance committee recommends the residents and town meeting members immediately call for creation, implementation of a proactive economic development plan, which will help to mitigate over-reliance on residential tax base to deliver services, and which stimulates growth in the commercial industrial tax base while preserving the community's character, improving safety, aesthetics, and the overall viability of the Route 6 corridor. We're lucky, because we have that Route 6 corridor. A lot of towns that don't have that, and are stuck with residential, are going to have even worse problems going forward than we currently have. The key elements of what we see a proactive economic development plan to be is to do a situation analysis. The plan should, should emphasize Dartmouth's being a regional shopping center with its commercial district comprised both local and nationally known businesses. It should feature major national retailers and proximity to UMass-Dartmouth, whose students create a major impact on the local economy and creation of a university-based retirement community. The second thing would be infrastructure improvements. The plan should incorporate the findings from the SERPED study, which examined traffic conditions, intersection operations, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and the overall safety concerns among, along the Route 6 corridor from Westport to Cross Road in Dartmouth. It recommends specific improvements to address these issues. Economic development initiatives, the plan should also proactively enhance Dartmouth's participation in Massachusetts state-funded economic development programs. Seek out and sell companies in healthcare. The reason I'm going to name some specific industries, because whatever we do, whatever we offer seems to attract certain kinds of industries. So the first one would be seek out companies in healthcare business, healthcare technology, marine technology, because of our harbor, and also the blue economy. And we should be looking to invite innovators in retail operations to settle along the Route 6 corridor. The implementation strategy for such a plan should include a phased approach with specific actions, responsible parties, funding mechanism, metrics, and metrics for the evaluation to ensure effective implementation. So, in conclusion, a proactive development plan for Dartmouth Route 6 corridor should aim to transform the area into a vibrant, sustainable commercial district that gives local residents while attracting regional visitors in commercial and industrial companies. Second, it should build on Dartmouth's existing strengths as a regional shopping center, healthcare services and technology center, education hub, and a strategic location in transportation for Southeastern Massachusetts. Third, it should enhance infrastructure, supporting business growth, improving aesthetics, and creating a cohesive identity for the corridor while maintaining Dartmouth's character. And then finally, hopefully, as we're also doing all this, we reduce our reliance on residential funding of town expenditures to provide services.
Any questions? Why turn over to Terry?
I don't have much, Gary talked about this. I want to start off by acknowledging Dave Tadlebaum's leadership in this process, because this is something that has been talked about quite a bit and just not been done. And, so we started meeting last year. We've got a presentation. Melissa has given us permission to present at the town meeting. So we're working on that right now. Three areas we're looking at in terms of long-term capital, schools, community services, and public works. And, and that will be broken down a little bit. But I guess the one thing I would add is that when we started to meet, we had trouble getting started, because we had health insurance and schools as a major kind of elephant in the room. And we had to talk about that a little bit before we could really get going. And at this point, we're looking at a similar process. There are other issues happening in terms of operational funds. So, I know that we're going to talk some more about moving, kind of incorporating that into our work. That's all I have. No PowerPoint for me.
But you will have a PowerPoint.
Oh, well, the long-term capital will, yeah.
Yeah. Dave?
We're going to present the presentation we're going to make at town meeting here next week. I think it's next week.
I think it was the 19th.
That too, okay. We're going to present that to the board here first before.
It could be next week. You're here next week to go over the budget. Are you?
Yeah, warrant.
The warrant. Sorry, warrant.
We're not here.
They went over the warrant, okay. Never mind.
So we're going to show it to the select board first before. It's a 10-minute presentation. No questions, because we're going to follow up in September with three workshops to invite the public to come on those three categories. We're going to dig deep into those and start the ball rolling going forward. And Terry's been on, with us from the beginning as well, and done a fine job. I know she's kept you abreast. I'd just like to say, my roots for town started at town meeting, but I was in the finance committee as well. And, and this, without sounding disingenuous, this is the most practical, detailed focus that I've, I've ever heard from folk, from the finance committee in terms of not only what the problems are, but what solutions are, as you said, Bob. And I think the timing for us is perfect, because we're moving off the opera, which was an awful lot of work. We're getting a lot done. We have a new town administrator who is familiar with a lot of these issues. He's going to be able to hit the ground running. We talked to him about economic development and all those things, and grant writing, et cetera. And, the Mass DOT project on Route 6 is hopefully going to happen, which is going to have to happen to get this thing going. And UMass-Dartmouth, without question, is on the rise again. I think they had a lot of problems, and they're now open to do more, and they want to work with the town, and it'd be up to us to knock on that door. And I also, and the train coming down to track, the talent maybe you're talking about could be of help as well. But it's going to be a coordinated effort, because there's a lot of balls in here regarding infrastructure and, and our schools. And in the end, my hope, and I know you're here for a reason, but I think in the end, we need to ask the question as well, what kind of town do we want, and what kind of schools do we want, and how are we going to pay for it? Because to me, that's a long-term plan. We have a capital plan, but we have a school plan. What do our kids and teachers deserve? Which has to be part of that equation. Thank you.
I want to add a little something, that I know right now we have an aging population, but at some point, and I'm going to sound a little dismal, but at some point, that's going to flip. And we're going to see the housing market flip, because more houses will come. And, and I think everybody knows what I'm talking about, whether the people are moving, or passing, or whatever. So I think, my point here, not to be dismal, is that if we invest in our schools now, then people will want to move into our town again for the school systems. Because I'll tell you, 25 years ago, that's why I moved here. Because of the reputation that the schools were amazing. I didn't go to Westport, because they didn't have a good reputation. I came to Dartmouth on purpose. And I think that over the next 20 years, we're going to see another flip like this. So, we saw it in Westport. It was a similar, I think, circumstance in Westport, right? They had an aging population. Eventually, they invested in their schools, and we're seeing a flip happen in Westport. So.
I'd like to comment.
I'm dismal.
My comment is, I think we have to take everybody's opinion in town. So, I think what we have to do is get some common ground and lay a base work, so that people who don't have kids in school, and they have different opinions, and people that do have kids in school have different opinions. And that base, that base level is where we can agree to agree, and agree to disagree, and work around our disagreements. And I think we might have to have a third party do that, so that we actually can get unbiased, untinted data from which to make decisions. So, the people who are in favor of schools can't throw aspersions on the data, and people who are not in favor of spending more on schools can't throw aspersions on the data. Get everyone on that baseline, and move forward from there with a common knowledge of what's going on, and being very transparent.
Brian, do you think that we'll get some of that information at the open sessions that Long-Term Capital is proposing to hold in September? Where they're focusing on, you know, schools and community, and public works?
I think you'll get some of it. And I think, I think the issue with schools is that we don't have that baseline. And we need to generate that baseline that both groups who are for spending more, or, or spending less on schools can see what the data is, agree that having a good school system is important to the town of Dartmouth, or disagree, and then take it from there. I don't, to answer your question, I don't think you're going to get it, because it's still going to be internally generated information. Even though, if you, I think we need somebody from the outside. I'll, I'm going to write up something and send it, but.
Oh, good. Because I do think, having participated in other groups, and say, in the past, I've gone to something that they've said, we're taking three groups, going to have them at different times, different locations. And then I've attended them, and seen kind of the same people. And then they produce the results, and I'm thinking, I saw, there was a half dozen of us, which were the same, making our voice heard three times. Now we've got three times as much.
And I think, to answer your question, we have to get a baseline from an impartial, neutral group, that all group, both the people who have kids in school, people who don't have kids in school, can agree the data is correct, and then make decisions based on that baseline, and have that affect tax rates, or what the town does to promote the school system. And I think the problem we have now is there's too many opinions, and not enough data. And people have their set opinions, and they're not going to change.
Well, I do thank you for bringing, or thank you, as in the FinCom, for bringing the actuals. Because, as you said, those are actual numbers. That's not the opinion of the, the numbers. That's not the opinion of where we grew, but the actual information. So I thank you for bringing that tonight. Did anyone on select board have anything?
I got one.
Else, oh, sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Okay. This goes back to the Economic Development Task Force. We had discussed in the beginning of the meeting, and it was cited just using, basically, you know, town employees, Fin Committee, and so on and so forth. Would it behoove us to bring in people from the Dartmouth business community that, you know, were successful here, and kind of like, following what made them come to Dartmouth, and why are they successful? And maybe that could help us, by their successes, bring in other businesses in the area. As a suggestion, to broaden our scope on who should be on the Economic Task Force.
So, Madam Chair, the vision that I had seen when regrouping this project was just that, the feedback from the business community, and having their input, you know, going out and being in the community. A lot of these business owners are wondering why that doesn't exist, to be honest with you. And I think that that's imperative, that they have a seat on that committee. Who else better to hear from than the business community? Whether that means the big-box stores and a combination of small mom and pops. Across the sectors, health and.
Does exist in other communities.
Yes, it does. I mean, we rely a lot on the chamber. Unfortunately, the chamber has X amount of communities to work on. I think that the niche market is dealing with, with, with the Dartmouth business owners. You know, you can only rely on the chamber for so much. They're a great organization, but unfortunately, you know, one particular community in that organization is not their major concern.
We can look at the past, if you're going to look at the past, Dartmouth had an IDC, an Industrial Development Commission, years and years ago. Its sole purpose, though, was to look at Bonnet Boulevard and that area there. And, at some point in time, they wanted to try to shift that, or that commission into an overall, overall business of the town. It just didn't pan out, for, for whatever reason. And I think a lot of the reason is, if I'm not, I have to go back, and I think, I believe, two of the five or six members of the commission passed away. And I think they were the, the key people of that commission. And that's why that, the IDC kind of went by the wayside. But we had it. You know, they're the ones, they brought in AHEAD. They brought in, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the industrial up in that area. So, you know, and just going back to the, trying to get people on the same page. Growing up, you know, I remember hearing town meeting people, you know, supporting the schools, and you had the old timers, I hate to say the old timers, who said, hey, I don't have any kids in the schools, what do I got to do? Well, come 30. I don't have any kids in the schools. What do I got to do? Well, come 30 years now, the people that were supporting the school are now the old timers, and they're saying the same thing that the old timers said 30 years ago, and you've got the new people. So the thing is, is that you can have that conversation, but that mentality has got to change, you know? And it's the same BS that we've been dealing with in this town for years when it comes to North versus South. You know, that crap has got to go. We've got to lose that swamp Yankee Brahmin mentality in this town. It's got to disappear, you know? And that's the thing. And the problem is, until you change that culture, nothing is going to happen in this town. And that's the key.
Well, I would say that we don't have the swamp Yankees' opinions written down on a piece of paper, and we don't have the pro-school people written down on a, and it's more than writing it down on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
And we don't have the forum for dispelling the swamp Yankee's thoughts versus the people who want to advance the schools by spending more money. And we need, what we need to do is get all that stuff out on the table and logically debate it. And where the swamp Yankees are wrong, to say, this is where you're wrong, because here's the data that proves you're wrong. And where the people who are in favor of schools, here's where you're right, but here's some areas where you have to understand where these other people in town...
And you've got to also understand the history, too. I mean, back in 1978, if I'm not mistaken, the school department, the town purchased land off of Bakerville Road for the purpose of building a high school.
That's right.
It took 25 years to do it. And even then, it passed with less than a thousand votes.
Well, but, you know, so...
We almost lost a grand mile, remember?
Yep.
But that's why you have, that's why you have to get the data out on the table.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have to, and then, you know, so if the town meeting doesn't support it, that's just the way it goes. I mean, they don't support it.
I have one comment, if I may, quickly. Some of in this room and some out there may be unhappy with our choice for the town administrator. This board gave him unanimous support. He handled himself well tonight. We're on the verge of doing the things that we're all talking about right now. And I would ask that you give him the support that he needs, to give him a chance. Because he's got the mojo to do it, but he needs the support of everyone to get him going, and give him what he needs. And we feel stronger than ever. We found the right guy for this job. And let's see if we can move this thing forward in a positive way as a team. If you've got problems with him, let him know. Be straight with him. He's a straight, honest kid. Not a kid, I'm sorry. Compared to me, he's a kid, yeah. I apologize. Compared to you, he's a grandkid, yeah.
You're right.
Brad. FinCom, thank you for coming. I know you need to take a minute to close out here.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I made that motion.
Motion made by Brian.
I'll second.
Second by Derek. All papers said aye.
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 Hi, Patrick. I hope so. I haven't seen you in ages. That's right. Be careful.
She was a good one, too.
Yes. Select Board members, if...
Take a break.
Oh. If we must just take a couple minutes, if we need it, select board, party break?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Party, party.
Bringing us back after that quick recess, I'm just going to bring us back to our agenda. We have an older American month proclamation that we signed, which is being taken over to the Council on Aging by Courier tomorrow morning so that Maria Connor has it. Next month, the month of May, will be the older American month being celebrated here in Dartmouth, and the Council on Aging is having a luncheon to celebrate our older Americans and our older Dartmouth residents. We have an item on tonight's agenda that we're holding off till next week, which is the certification of public housing agency plan consistency. And our last item on tonight's agenda, regular agenda, is the town meeting draft warrant review.
So, Madam Chair, in your packet you have the town meeting warrant. The only article there is the town budget, which we're working on and I'll have finalized on Thursday. As you know, there are four unions in the town. I've settled with two of those, hoping to have those other two settled by this week. If not, there will be a town meeting warrant article in October to fund those other unions, which is the laborers and the police. So I'm working to try to get those done so that we can get them in the budget and not have to have a warrant article, but we'll see how that goes. So you have it in front of you for review. Next week, we'll be voting on the warrant in its entirety. And at that time, this is right now just the point of informational purposes only.
Okay. When we vote next week, will we have the Finance Committee's recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So in tonight's packet, there are all the warrant articles with their descriptions. So I encourage everyone to read through them for next week so that we can discuss them and vote on them. Yes.
We got in the Finance Committee. They'll vote sometime this week, I guess, on it?
So they voted on everything, every article but the budget.
Okay. So they're not going to be here as a group next week?
No.
Should, will you be able to represent what the how and when they voted, or should we ask for someone to be here in case they have questions?
No, I can, what I'll do is I'll have the minority and majority opinion sent to the board so they can review that prior to you, the board, taking a vote. So we'll have that in next week.
Would it be helpful if we asked someone to show, or is it not necessary?
We can have a representative from the Finance Committee. We can invite someone there.
Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Yeah. Usually when we're talking about this, we always are asking, how did they vote? So I think it will be important to have the recommendation.
There have been times we have not had them here. I'd like to have someone here. I know you can give us some stuff, but I'd like to have someone here from there. Thank you.
Okay. Great. All right. We are now at the interim town administrator update.
So thank you, Madam Chair. At 4:15, I conducted staff meetings in two sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, which lasted about an hour and a half. Close to 90 town employees total were in attendance. Some of the topics discussed were staff development, communication between department heads and staff, the classification and comp study that we have ongoing, and health benefits. Feedback from employees was generally positive. I encouraged staff to reach out to their department heads if interested in specialized training that would result in efficiency in the day-to-day operations within their own department. The Friends of the Dartmouth Library will be holding its annual book sale on May 1st, 10 a.m. to 7:00. May 2nd, 10 a.m. to 4:00, and May 3rd, 10 a.m. to 1:00 at Southworth. There'll be a preview on Wednesday, April 30th, from 4:00 to 7:00, and all proceeds will go to support the Dartmouth Library. And finally, you know, even though it may not feel like spring, the Daffodil Fields at Parsons Reserve are in full bloom. The daffels were planted back in the 1940s during World War II when there was an embargo actually on bulbs and could not be brought into the, in from Europe. Eight years later, some of those original bulbs are still in bloom. The DNRT, Dartmouth National Resource Trust, maintains the field and the trails and suggests a $5 donation when visiting, and their address is 50 Horse Neck Road, and they open daily from 6 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have proposed town projects, and that is going to be coming before us on May 5th with Dan from the planning director.
And the reason for that is there was a conflict. Their meeting was tonight, so he had to be at the planning board meeting.
Okay. And in our packet are the recent planning board projects that we have.
Correct.
So we'll be able to ask him questions on those next week. Okay. Old business. 40B update?
So on April 23rd, we visited the proposed site on 970 Tucker Road, the residence at Hawthorne, a proposed development that will include 40B affordable housing. A couple members of the Select Board were present, DPW, the developer, and I met on site to discuss the project. Submitted application to mass housing for the project that has been forwarded to Susan Murphy, the Town's 40B Council, for review. The site in Hathaway Road, as mentioned at the last board meeting, has also been submitted to Attorney Murphy for review. No further updates on that location. I am suggesting to the board that Attorney Murphy, at the meeting on 5/19, attend to discuss the status of those proposed projects and the applications.
I think that's a great idea. Should we hold then, the next meeting with Dan, next, the 5th, to the 19th so that they're both here together and all the projects are discussed at once?
We could do that. I think Dan's projects are more, I want to say, the list encompasses 40B, but there's a...
There's others.
Yeah, there's others. And there's also the location on Route 6 where the car dealership is.
Yeah.
And now I'm hearing that there potentially may be another, where Route 6 Auto Marine is another 40B, another project, housing project going in there. That's another proposal that I've just kind of heard. So on both sides of that road, they're looking at something between the Holly Davidson facility and the dealership.
Okay.
And also across the street.
So we'll hear more about those next week?
Correct.
Question on that?
Excellent. Dave?
Do we, the car dealership proposal, Fons Corner Road, have we gotten any contact in the last two to three weeks, or is it nothing?
The proposed Audi dealership that was...
The one that was, the one that, a month or so was lost.
That was the proposed Audi dealership. I haven't heard any new updates from them?
Nothing new?
They've gone out to market again, Dave.
Yeah, they've, I think they've left our area.
What's that, Chris?
They've gone out to market. The owners.
Another location?
No, the owners have gone out to market to sell. So it looks like...
Rose, rose.
Want to sell the land?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, rose, okay.
Opportunity lost.
Yeah.
Well, a big time one also.
Can we, could I ask a ridiculous question on that? Can we call an all-points bullet and try to rescue that in some form? Is that completely impossible? Meaning to understand what happened and try to make it right, or is that just not possible?
Maybe the recommendations of the board would maybe have a member of, maybe Dan next week can speak a little bit on, maybe if they're going forward with reapproaching them, or, but as far as I know, as of today, that has not...
I understand that. But you know what I'm saying, Chris?
About a different location?
I think what you're looking for, I think you're looking for a better understanding of what happened and a confirmation that it's over.
Who? Who is?
You.
You are, correct?
Not me?
Yeah.
No, no, the opposite. And I'd say this is a reach. Hat in hand, say, we completely screwed that up, and we found out what the problems were, prepared to do what it takes to make this deal work.
Yeah. My understanding on that, Dave, is that there were other things in the background going on.
I understand.
So I don't think it's possible, but you know, I'm more than willing to reach out and...
Call them.
Well, I think it's more, well, it's a perfect, doesn't require a lot of sewage. It, you know, it's not, it's a, it's a good use of that land, and it's a big operation. And at the end of the day, it may be dead of the water, but in six months from now, if we found out, we could have or should have, and I'm not saying that's the case. I don't know enough of the detail.
I think it's basically going to be a confirmation that they're done. But, but you know what? Maybe that's helpful.
There were issues with the actual parcel as well.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a perfect site.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, it wasn't a perfect...
I'm a little confused. Originally, they were looking at that, the site was on Route 6. Am I right, Gary?
No.
On Route 6. Walmart, that Walmart, right. Originally.
Right. They were looking at the track of land between Dartmouth, Tolling and...
And our planning department changed that and said, this is, we got a better site.
Not planning. Technical review.
Whichever it was.
The whole group, yeah.
Whatever it was, it doesn't matter, the fact that they, they changed their, what they were really looking at and were happy with, then they moved somewhere else. So what happened there?
I don't think it's, I don't know, my personal, I don't think it's appropriate because we're not sure exactly what happened.
We don't know.
And the parties that go to buy a parcel are not going to do it off a recommendation from, you know, from us.
Review.
Yeah, they're going to make their own decision, so I don't want to throw anybody under the bus.
All right. So are you saying we should just let it go?
We could have, we could have Chris reach out to them. You know, I don't have a problem with that. It's not up to me, but, and just confirm that it is in fact a gone.
I was contacted by the, before it was dead, dead then, I was contacted by their attorney, local attorney.
Yeah.
And is it, I know I'm talking out of my hat.
No, things come from it, you know? There's no, no reason not to talk about it, but...
Well, I'm going to say two things then. We can have Chris certainly make a phone call, but if an attorney spoke to you and you have that contact, you might as well call him.
Okay.
And just see.
Yeah.
What he says.
I'm not being naive here, I...
Oh, I know.
I know what's going on here, but...
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So going back right now to the Hawthorne Country Club, Residence at Hawthorne, and you said a number, a couple of folks went out and toured.
Yes.
There is an opportunity for us to make comments about concerns on, about that site.
Yeah.
And when does that comment period?
We've got to check on the date, if that's end of this week or the end of next week. But the application, just I think...
It's going to be done by the end of May, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It's going to be back to the end of May.
Back to, yeah.
Yeah.
We can get the date.
I think if anyone reads through, so we have in our packet from page 61, it's a long one, from page 61 to about 85, we have the information on that site. So if you take a look through it and know the site and have any concerns, I suggest that you do make sure that you enter a comment, and that can be sent directly to Chris Vitale.
I'll be honest with you, it should come from, it should come from the attorney, it should come from the attorney, but not just individual...
Susan.
Maybe they go through the attorney.
Yeah, the major concern is traffic. You know, one way in, one way out, you know, and it's on, and it's on a bad curve. You know, unless they have another way out, which I don't think they have, because the only other way out is through a private way, which they can't access, you know? That's, that's a big problem. You know, you're going to have, how many, how many units? Hundred and something?
195?
And then additional. Yeah, they had talked to us, they had spoke to us on site about traffic and the concern about traffic on that area.
They have submitted a traffic study, which was done by UMass Dartmouth.
UMass Dartmouth did the traffic study?
Well, that was the focus, was UMass Dartmouth.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying UMass Dartmouth did the study. I'm saying the focus was the traffic coming in all those directions heading to UMass Dartmouth.
Different project.
Oh, shoot.
You're on a what?
I am. I'm on the old West Fort Road project. Never mind, there was not a traffic study.
The traffic study hasn't, hasn't been done yet.
What time is it? Okay. All right.
I just want to let everybody know, I'm not going to comment at all on that part because I'm...
I understand. You're in a butter.
I'm in a butter. But I did go to that meeting because it was a preliminary meeting. I just wanted to see what was going on. And other than that, I'm not going to make any other comments.
Okay. When we, so we'll make sure that Susan Murray?
Yes.
Okay. That she gets her comment in, on our behalf in advance.
Hold on a minute.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, Stanley?
Yeah.
You're, you're part of an association, correct?
Yes.
You're not in a butter. The association's the butter.
Right. But they will, they will send letters to every...
One, one hundredth or whatever it is.
Right.
So you're a very small part of that association versus everything else. So you have every right...
You have, no worry, but you have every right to speak up on this project no matter what, so...
I can only tell you that they did come up with some kind of an access, an emergency access road. Am I right, Gary?
Yes.
And they wanted to put it on Fairway Drive, which is a private...
That's a private road.
Private road. It's not even an accepted road in the town.
I think we need to be kind of careful here because we're all going on little information and not a lot of facts.
Other than that, I'm not going to...
The problem, the problem is that we don't even know enough about it to make any kind of a recommendation or take action. What do we do, and how do we take the action?
That's why we have a lawyer.
David, there's only one way in and out of the property.
I mean, come on. I mean, you don't need to, that's, that's a fact. And the other fact is, is that it's a bad curve.
No matter what.
But it's been, it's been a public place that had hundreds of cars, and it was during activities. I, you know, Hawthorne had hundreds of cars there at one point.
At certain times of the day.
And certain times of the year.
And certain times of the year.
Often. They were busy all the time.
This is now...
All right. So we will hear more next week with Dan, Planning Director.
Who did this project?
That, this is one of them.
Okay.
But then we will hear on May 19th from Attorney Murphy, who will talk to us about the status and of all the 40B projects that she's looking at.
Are we going to hear anything about the Dartmouth Street project on the apartment building that's being built as we speak?
Next, that will be part of, I think that's part of Dan's numbers.
If it isn't, we make sure that it is, right?
Yep.
And next week, the other thing we're going to be looking at is that first piece of what Randy gave us, which was talking about fees. Chris Vitale has done the second part of it, so he will be here next week to talk about...
But that, that apartment building will be on the, will be on the list as well with Dan?
It's supposed to be. It's all, anything that is in any phase of construction. That's what I asked for.
Without, even though if it's not 40B, a private, yes.
Would you make sure that...
And they're, that particular company, they're looking for some relief.
Right.
Well, the board, the board will have guidance for that as a second part of the fee.
They need a lot more relief.
All right. So back to our agenda, I apologize. Anything on Bliscana?
No new updates.
Lake Nokachoke?
No new updates.
Municipal broadband?
No new updates.
DEP Title V amendments?
No new updates.
All right. Moving into the minutes, the minutes of March 24th, 2025.
Yeah.
I just want to say that on, it's page 87 in our agenda, I just want to, item C, former chief Zailer, Zailer was spelled incorrectly.
S.
That's page 87.
S.
Okay. S Z A L A. And then on page 88, item G, we appointed Susan Murray to the Agricultural Commission, and subsequently, Susan Murray has been elected to the Board of Health. The problem becomes that in the charter, you cannot be elected to a board and appointed to another board unless that board is under the elected board. So she actually serves on two boards right now, and I've asked the town clerk to look to see if anyone else falls under this, and I haven't heard back. But let me just see. She...
I don't think there is.
Excuse me?
I don't think there is anybody.
Okay. Well, I figured there's somebody on Agricultural Commission to tell me that I screwed up if, if not. But she is going to let me know if there is, and we will need to reach out to the Agricultural Commission and the other commission that she's on, and let them know that they're going to have to appoint someone else.
Susan needs to resign from the Agricultural Commission.
And she's on another one, and I don't have it in front of me. So that was on page 88. Otherwise, the meeting minutes of March 24th, 2025 are accurate, unless anyone else saw something.
No.
No.
So other than changing Chief Zailer's name...
Just make the, just make the correction and have to amend it.
Spelling correction.
Right.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 24th and April 7th.
Okay. We have, looking for a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonnell and Mr. Mickelson with a second to approve the minutes of March 24th and April 7th, 2025. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All right. Moving now into Select Board updates. I'll start down the end. Mr. O'Neil, did you have anything?
Just a couple of things. I'm wondering if the chair can ask for an update from the PFAS attorney? We haven't had one in quite a while. And suits was supposed to be settled in February, March. David's committee's working pretty hard for long-term capital, and it may come into play. So I'd like to find, get an update from Attorney Norton. And also mass development, Gary, I don't know if we got anything back on the application that we sent in for mass development for the police station?
I haven't seen anything yet, but I'll confirm.
I'm good, Heidi.
Okay. And that was with Mr. Garnier. Mr. McDonnell?
I have nothing.
I want to comment, though. Mr. McDonnell was seen throwing out the opening day pitch at the girls' softball opening day. Am I correct?
You certainly were, and boy, I tell you, there was a lot of pressure on him, making sure I at least got to the plate.
How many bounces?
How many bounces?
How many bounces?
How many bounces?
One bouncer. At home plate.
Excellent. I think that's, you got it in the right direction.
Yep. At least it was right down the middle, even though my granddaughter complained.
Well, it was nice to see, see you in that role. Mr. Middleton, Middleton. Oh, gosh.
Mickelson, no.
Mickelson.
I'm all set.
All set? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Other than the correction of Stanley's name, I don't think...
Please, yes.
Kind of like it.
Middleton.
Just change him completely.
Related to, what's her name in, was she Princess Middleton?
Oh, right. Kate Middleton. See, I'm thinking Arthur from way back when. All right.
Danny, you know Princess.
We have, in your packet, you have a couple of things. The DPU notice on technical sessions, and also the town libraries. Dina St. Pierre has announced that the library will be closed on Monday, June 9th, for staff development with the full staff, which is exciting because they're going to be planning on their launch of the Library of Things, which she has spoken about before, and how that is going to happen. And they will also be closed on Saturday, July 5th, coming off of the Fourth of July holiday, so give their workers a long weekend.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
I've been using the library recently, more than I have since like fourth grade.
Uh-huh.
And it is one fantastic operation.
Isn't it incredible how well-used it is?
It's a beautiful, this is...
It is. We're very fortunate.
Down southwards. It's outstanding. Outstanding.
Thank you. I have nothing this week to add to this agenda.
It covers so much, there couldn't be any more.
I know. We're back-to-back. I want to thank all of you for the work that went into tonight's interview and negotiations, and I truly look forward to moving in the right direction as we...
And you've taken on this job extremely well.
We shall, yeah, we shall see.
Great.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Just one quick, just one very quick thing. The Payton Aaron Bridge is being closed tomorrow for some kind of repairs.
I'm hoping it closes. You gonna go all the way around?
Yes.
Payton Aaron Bridge temporarily closed tomorrow.
Right.
Between the hours of 9:00 to 2:00.
It's temporarily open.
9:00 to 2:00. All right. You've heard it first here.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.